Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 5th, 2024 Public Board Meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests, both in person and online. Trustees are present both in person and online at this meeting. Joining us in person are trustees Amos Bryden, Oliver Rocha, Shuttleworth, Zhang, Ahmed. And online, joining us is trustee Danielli. We do expect trustee Baxter and trustee, sorry, me, sorry, trustee Gray to be joining us online momentarily. Director Ennis, please let us know which staffer in attendance this evening. [S02] Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair,
and good evening to everyone. We have a full complement of senior staff here this afternoon to support tonight's meeting. [S01] Tonight, I will be honoring the land. We begin by acknowledging
the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which the HDSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty entitled lands of the Anishinaabe Ojibwe Mishisagik Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Mishisagik territory in the past and present continues to host both Indigenous and non-Indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties and responsibilities, and Indigenous rights, while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land. At the first meeting of each month, we formally acknowledge the History and Heritage Months and Days identified by the Government of Ontario. Please join us in celebrating and supporting the diverse communities that exist within our Halton communities. This month, we recognize Filipino, Italian, Indigenous, and Portuguese Heritage Months. I will be speaking to Philippine, a Filipino Heritage Month. Ontario is home to over 337,000 people of Philippine origin. The Filipino community has contributed to all aspects of Ontario's prosperity and diverse heritage for generations. The province of Ontario recognizes the positive impact the Filipino community has made and continues to make in Ontario and throughout the rest of Canada. June is an important month for the Filipino community. Every year on June 12th, the Filipino community around the world celebrates Philippine Independence Day. Filipino Heritage Month in Ontario will provide all Ontario's, both today and in future generations, with an opportunity to learn about and celebrate the rich heritage and histories of the Filipino-Canadian community. It will also give Ontarians the opportunity to reflect on the roles and contributions of Filipino Ontarians in communities across the province. Next on our list is the Italian Heritage Month, and Donna Danielli will be speaking to that. Trustee Danielli. [S03] Thank you very much.
Ontario is home to more than 1,350,000 Italian Canadians. Canada is one of the largest Italian migration groups within the world. Since the 1880s, the Italian-Canadian community has made and continues to make significant contributions to the growth and prosperity of the province of Ontario. By proclaiming the month of June as Italian Heritage Month, the province of Ontario recognized the important contributions immigrants have made in building Ontario's communities and the economic, political, social, and cultural achievements of Italian Canadians throughout the province. Italian Heritage Month is an opportunity to remember, celebrate, and educate future generations of Ontario's rich history. Thank you very much. [S01] Thank you, trustee Danielli.
Trustee Shrebalan will read the Heritage Month for National Indigenous History Month.
Thank you, Chief Collard. National Indigenous History Month in Canada is celebrated through June and honors the rich cultural heritage, diverse traditions, and resilience of Indigenous people, as June 21st is National Indigenous People's Day in Canada. It serves as a time for reflection and education and recognition of the contributions of Indigenous communities that have made and continue to make the fabric of Canada's Canadian society. It's an opportunity, it's an opportunity for Canadians to engage in meaningful dialogue, acknowledge the injustices of the past, and commit to building a more inclusive and equitable future for all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shrebalan. And trustee Rocha will be reading the Portuguese History and Heritage Month. [S05] As the daughter of Portuguese immigrants, I am proud to recognize June
as Portuguese Heritage Month. Did you know that Portuguese explorers were among the first Europeans to set foot into what is now known as Canada over 500 years ago? Fun fact, it was a Portuguese man, Pedro da Silva, who was recognized as Canada's first official letter carrier when he transported and delivered mail by canoe between Montreal and Quebec City in 1693. And did you know that in 2013, a Portuguese-Canadian Walk of Fame was established in Toronto to honor the outstanding achievements of Portuguese Canadians? Some inductees you may recognize include John Tavares of the Toronto Maple Leafs and Drew Doughty of the Los Angeles Kings, Megan Benfetu, a former The Portuguese-Canadian community has made and continues to make many significant contributions to our society. Sendo filho de pais portugueses, é com muito orgulho que anunciou o mês de junho, o mês da herança portuguesa no Canadá. É o tempo quando reconhecemos as imensas contribuições de luzo-Canadianas para o crescimento e desenvolvimento do nosso país. Obrigada.
Thank you very much, trustee Rocha. Before we get to the approval of the agenda, we do have a very busy meeting tonight, and we might need to extend the meeting at some point in time, which can be disruptive to the flow of debate. It has been suggested to me by manager Khan that we preemptively vote on a motion to extend the meeting by one hour and hope for the best while planning for the worst. Vice Chair Oliver, would you like to second that motion?
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition to approving this motion? Seeing none, this is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to item 1.5, Approval of the Agenda. Trustee Bryden, would you like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I would.
Trustee Rocha, would you like to second this motion?
I would.
Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the agenda? Trustee Rocha.
Yes, there's an item that I think should probably be removed from today's agenda, and that is item 4.2.3, which is the the school naming and renaming policy and governance procedure that is listed for future action.
Yes, that item has been included intentionally because it appeared at Committee of the Whole in May and is not coming forward tonight because it is still being worked on, and an update will be given on the progress of the item. And that is, it is for future decision. It just is not ready tonight for the report to come forward.
So for clarification, is it for future decision at the next board meeting this month?
It depends on if the work gets done.
So my concern there is that when it was brought to Committee of the Whole, the back half of that policy, there was great debate, or procedure, there was great debate as to how it was worded, and I'm concerned that it's being rushed through. And the other fact is, we have, there's no draft included in this report, so it's unfair to the public to have an item on here that's going to be for future decision. And for us as well, if we don't see what the draft is, how can we be expected to be potentially voting at it at the next meeting? And I know it was a, it was a procedure that caused great consternation in March because we were all confused as to how the policy worked, so I would want to give that procedure the attention it deserves, the detail it needs, so that we don't face future mix-ups as we did in, in March.
Okay, it's, it's there as an update. There's no intention to rush this through. It depends on how long it takes to do the work, and it is just an update. It will go to Committee of the Whole again before it comes to board.
Okay, so I, I hear that you're saying it's just an update. If it's just an update, then I would ask that it be moved to Committee Updates instead of Forward Decision.
I'm amenable to that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask that we move item 2.2 to follow the presentation, item 2.3, because the, the new student trustee that will be introduced is not here yet, and we'd like him to be present. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other changes requested? Seeing none, is there any other discussion regarding the approval of the agenda? Are there any objections to approving the agenda as amended? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's agenda? Seeing none, I will pass the gavel over to trustee, trustee Shuttleworth, one of the co-chairs of the Inspire Awards, to preside over this evening's awards.
Thank you. So it is my honor and privilege to be able to present the, to the Inspire Awards to our five individuals who are here this evening, and after we're done with you, we will talk about the 13 other people who have chosen to receive their awards at their schools. So just to give everybody in the audience some knowledge of what an Inspire Award is, is to recognize those people within our community who go above and beyond in working towards the success of our students and our schools. So I am very honored to be able to present the five people tonight. So what I will do is I will call upon the name of the person getting the award. I will then also call upon their local trustee. However, trustee Gray is unable to be with us tonight, so the chair of the board will be presenting those awards in her absence. Okay, are we ready? We'll start off with Jody Dobby, and Chair Collard will be presenting the award to her. Come on out. Did I get it right? Dobby?
Yeah.
Jody, you are an exceptional change-maker at Acton District School Board. The care you show for both the students and the staff extends beyond your role as a student success teacher. You are the architect of a number of initiatives aimed at improving success and achievement with student and staff mental health. Along with being an incredible teacher, you are a gifted mentor and support for your fellow teachers. From organizing weekly wellbeing skating programs, to creating mindfulness strategies, to developing the Acton Adventure Program, you go above and beyond every day to make Acton District School a wonderful place for students and staff. Your effort will positively impact the school's culture and community for years to come. Jody, congratulations. Matthew Tyhurst, who is from Georgetown District High School, and again, Chair Collard will be presenting you the award. Did everybody here know that Alton Hills is home to one of Ontario's biggest gas plants? On December 12th, 2023, Matthew, you convinced Alton Hill town councillors to reject the plant's expansion, expansion project by challenging them to consider future impacts of climate change and local air pollution. You spoke for the youth of Georgetown and reminded the town council of the impact this decision would have on their future and their health. You have also taken steps to ensure students in Georgetown that they are educated about the importance of municipal politics in protecting the environment. You have developed a curriculum for students to visit Town Hall and participate in mock town council meetings as part of a co-op placement with the mayor of Alton Hills and Lawler. You are committed to inspiring students to take action in their community. An amazing job. Okay, next up, we have Alora Bishop from Centennial Public School, and again, Chair Collard will be presenting to you. Alora, you have gone above and beyond to fight for the rights of students while respecting boundaries and showing compassion, interest, and a commitment to ensuring that everyone feels safe and like they belong. You inspire others with your dedication to make schools a safe place for all. You go that extra mile to advocate for your students, their mental health and wellbeing, and their right to enjoy school no matter who they are. Many students have been touched by your kindness and continue to hold special plates in their hearts for you. Alora, you have made a lasting impact on countless people. You are not only a wonderful teacher, but a wonderful person. All right, next up is Diana. Diana Dunle from Alton Village Public School, and trustee Zhang will present this to her. Diana, you have been a tremendous support to Alton Village Public School since it opened in 2012. You have led countless events and fundraisers benefiting the students and the staff, including a dance-a-thon, the holiday shop, a fun fair, staff appreciation days, and so much more. You have used your own personal resources, personal funds, and countless hours of your personal time to ensure a positive school culture. You are always the first to volunteer, support parents, staff, and students to make Alton Village Public School feel like a family. Diana, you have built a culture of lasting leadership and positivity that will continue to inspire the Alton Village community. Thank you so much for all of your hollered work. And next up, we have Anusha Tanvir, who is from MM Robinson High School. Anusha, you are one of the CEOs of the Equity at MM Robinson School, working to ensure that all students see their identity reflected and celebrated in the classroom by promoting cultural diversity, breaking down barriers, and creating opportunities for as many students as possible. Every year, for the past three years, the CEO of Equity has worked tirelessly to orchestrate MM Robinson's High School's Multicultural Week, and that CEO is you. They have, you have also organized movie nights to promote learning about Equity, learning lunches to unpack implicit bias, presentations about Indigenous history and culture, spaces for prayer, and so much more. Your efforts at laying the groundwork for continued advocacy and activism to dismantle systemic barriers is making a true difference. Thank you so much for all of you joining us tonight. We also have some other recipients who have chosen to receive their awards at the schools, and that includes Amy Abbott from Thomas A. Blakelock High School, Maxwell Boateng from Dr. David R. Williams Public School, Jen Bromley from Abbey Lane Public School, Kimberly Calderbank from Central Public School, Jeremy Eaton Harding from MM Robinson High School, Jaden Hill from MM Robinson High School, Scarlett Jarvis from MM Robinson High School, Charlotte Lapierre from Dr. David R. Williams Public School, Kristy Morrison from Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School, Emma Phillips from Sir Ernest MacMillan Public School, Jills Quenneville, sorry if I pronounced it wrong, from Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School, Myola Sequera from Eastview Public School, Nancy Wilson Blackley from Central Public School, and David Woods from White Oak Secondary School. Thank you so much for all you have done to improve the Alton District School Board. We really appreciate all of your support.
Thank you very much, trustee Shuttleworth. And now we move up to presentations. I would like to welcome Superintendent Barnes to deliver the Mental Health Parents Survey presentation.
I have our mental health lead, Michelle Bates, to the right of me, and our research department staff member, Maria Glissick, to the left. They're going to give a brief presentation on the mental health, on our mental health strategy action plan. Specifically, there was a special survey we did called the Meaningful Parents Survey. So separate from the Have Your Say survey, we have internal research that we do in our department, and it's to give us feedback on our evidence-based practices. So Maria and Michelle are going to speak about them this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle. Lovely to be here. Thank you so much. So you'll see on the slide deck, if we could move to slide two, we just want to situate, thank you, this work to let you know that it's related to the mental health strategy. And so in that strategy, you see an area that refers to mental health support and care, and you see here identified three priorities. We have bolded the parents, school staff, students, and community agencies actively engaged to create circles of support. And so we wanted to dig into that further to understand what the experience was for parents, caregivers, and guardians when they were engaging with school staff in relation to creating circles of support when their child had a mental health and wellbeing concern. So then I'll turn it over to Maria, and she can lead us through the survey.
So in May of last year, families were invited to respond to an anonymous survey, and the questions were pertaining to their relationships and experiences they had when it comes to their children's mental health and wellbeing and collaboration with school staff. We're just going to highlight a few of the findings. The survey was longer and had many more questions, but we thought we'd share some of the most important findings tonight. So we had asked families if they had concerns about their children's mental health and wellbeing, how would they go about it, and how comfortable they would feel reaching out to school staff. As you can see from the bar graph presented on this slide, 74% of parents felt very comfortable or comfortable reaching out to school staff. However, 26% of parents felt either uncomfortable or very uncomfortable when it comes to reaching out to school staff and discussing their children's mental health and wellbeing. We also asked parents a number of questions that were related to their experiences once they engaged with school staff. So only the parents who said that they had any contact with school staff regarding their children's mental health and wellbeing were actually asked some of the following questions. And as you can see here, on average, between 70 to 80% of parents felt they had very positive relationships. So they either agreed or strongly agreed with the statements that were talking about whether they felt valued and recognized, whether they felt that the staff supported their plans for their child, whether they were open to parents' ideas and feedback, and whether they were hopeful their children will get better. However, we do have between 20 to 25% of parents who disagreed or strongly disagreed with these statements, implying that their experiences and interactions with staff were not as positive as some other parents. And the same trend continues for some of the other questions. As you can see here, parents were asked whether their goals were important to, the goals that were suggested were important to them and their children. They also shared, whether they shared information or strategies to support their children, whether staff created a positive and welcoming environment, whether they actually listened to parents and guardians concerned, and whether they were asked about strategies that they think or they suggested being used for their children. The trend is the same. We have between 70 and 80% of families who had very positive experiences and about 20 to 30% of families who disagreed or strongly disagreed with these statements, again implying somewhat less positive experiences. We also ask parents and guardians to indicate what the school board can do to improve their comfort level when it comes to reaching out and collaborating with school staff. And as you can see, communication is very important to them, as well as email updates. They also suggested sessions for their children as well as for families on mental health and wellbeing. Staff taking nonjudgmental stance, removing staff taking nonjudgmental stance, removing stigma, and showing empathy and compassion when it comes to student mental health and wellbeing.
So that concludes our presentation. We have some time for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Any. Yes, thank you. Through the chair. I saw that parents were given an opportunity on how they can improve the relationship with with the HDSB. And seeing as how one in four parents are not, are in the bottom end, they're not very happy, were they given an opportunity to express why they were uncomfortable, why they didn't feel that they could connect with the HDSB? So I'm just looking, were they given that opportunity to give that feedback so that we can look to improve those relationships?
Yeah, it's ongoing. Since the start of this year, there's various mechanisms. We do try to engage parents for feedback. Some of it's at the school level, some of it's at system level. I will let Michelle Bates elaborate a little bit further.
Thank you for your question. We had intentionally designed the survey based on some focus groups that we held with a variety of parent groups in the 2020 to 2021 school year. And we also did a literature review. And so those questions that you saw or you heard Maria share, those are actual actionable items. So things like, was I asked? Did I feel like my ideas were being accepted? And so I think that we can infer from the results that when parents were not endorsing those, so the one in four not, that gives us as a board an indication of what our action items can be to improve parents' experiences of collaborative, meaningful relationships with us.
I have one follow-up. How often is this survey conducted?
Yeah, we've been really fortunate to have our partnership with the Research Department. It's really kind of formally started last year in terms of this type of deeper dive in the research. So we're going to be taking back whether we do this survey on an annual basis or by yearly basis. As I said earlier, we definitely rely on the Have Your Save data for a lot of our pieces for mental health, but we're going to be consulting and reviewing whether we will be doing this on an annual basis.
Thank you. Next speaker is Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. Through the chair to the presenter. Thank you very much. I have a question regarding the parents, the age of the children of the parents who you surveyed. So you said the number around 1,500 parents. Do we know if those parents were mainly parents of high school students or elementary school students?
Yes, we do. I believe it was mostly elementary students. I know that the ratio was about 25 to 75. So I think 75% elementary and 25% secondary, if I remember well.
And then a follow-up with that is, do we know if the uncomfortability, you know what I mean, came from a specific age?
I believe we did not disaggregate the whole survey by elementary or secondary panel. However, we did ask parents whether their children have an IP. So we had that as a disaggregation, and the survey was also, the results were presented to the CAC Committee. We found out that the parents who indicated that their children have an IP were not any less satisfied. If anything, they were slightly, had slightly more positive experiences, although the experiences were pretty similar to the overall.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through the chair, this is, I guess, an extension of Trustee Rocha's question. So just to clarify, the 26% of parents who were experiencing discomfort around seeking assistance, so they were not participating in the deeper dive through the focus groups? We don't, I guess it was anonymous, so we don't know who those 26% of parents were. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you to the speakers, and I just want to thank you very much for bringing this because this is really important information for us to go forward and ensure that families are feeling comfortable coming to us when they have problems or when they suspect there are problems. Because we do spend six hours a day with their children, and we may see things and perceive things in a different light if we know that there is a concern at home. And that could be helpful to making sure that students get the help that they need sooner. So thank you very much for bringing this report, and I hope you go annual. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Student Trustee Report. Trustee Shrebalan and Alum Zanov, we are looking forward to your report.
Awesome. Thank you so much for calling. Good evening to all trustees, staff, parents, and students. It's a great privilege to be speaking to all you today. Today, Trustee Shrebalan and I are proud to present our report for the month of June.
It's no exaggeration that we've kept quite busy considering that we've had not one but two Senate meetings since our last report. These were the bittersweet last two Senate meetings of the school year. The main meeting, which took place on May 14th, was themed around environmental leaderships. And our student trustee Alex, just walking in the room, both in the gallery with us today, spoke to this theme in a very engaging trivia game. They're clearly beyond ready to lead the Senate in the following year. With that, Superintendent Godet spoke to the facility's perspective of eco-activism within our board, informing us of several board-wide ongoings that ensure our commitment to sustainability. Furthermore, we checked in with our senators on their HLF month fundraisers conducted very successfully in the past month by raising thousands of dollars. Trustee Alum Zanov and I spoke to our AI questions within the Have Your Say survey that we were fortunate enough to have by the Research Department, and promoting the survey through our senators to their friends and families for our presentation to take place at the next committee of the whole meeting, with student recommendations from our findings, both through Senate consultation as well as through the survey. Lastly, but certainly not least, we spoke to the promotion of the Sustainable Leadership Awards, which recently just closed on May 31st. Our senators very diligently promoted and nominated several environmentalists, who the Environmental Leadership Senate Subcommittee will be finalizing the recipients of said awards in the following week. Recipients will receive the awards in their schools in collaboration with their senators and school administrators for a fun celebration.
Awesome. And yesterday, June 4th, we had another Senate meeting, which was the last one for the year. We had quite a lengthy session recapping the initiatives of the past year and discussing some of the structural changes to the Constitution that Trustee Shrebalan and I would like to design before the end of our term. More on that to follow, but we hope to alleviate much of the operational work from student trustees in the future, which this year has particularly taken up 90% of our time and transformed the role towards more advocacy-based initiatives. Apart from that, we also want to extend our gratitude to Jason Meisner, who stepped up to give an address to our Senate on the work the Communications Department has done within the student body. And lastly, this meeting in general was a very bittersweet experience with Trustee Shrebalan and I leaving our roles as chairs of the student senate. Lots of photos were taken, good advice were said, and although it was very emotional, we see a great future ahead for the entirety of the student governance body. We would like to also highlight the endeavors of our incoming student trustees and the student senate who have collectively taken the initiative to record an end-of-the-year video and give us well presents to all graduating students within the student senate. Although, we would also probably talk about this at the next board meeting, we also want to say the biggest thank you to all of our staff advisors, being Louisa Patello, Lindsay Aiken, Joanne Iliac, Andrea Gill, and Kelly Gray for being the most supportive and kindest people on our journey this year. They were an integral part of Senate, and nothing could be done without them.
Another major update of this month was attending our final OSTA ECO conference, that being the 2024 Annual General Meeting at the Marriott Hotel in downtown Toronto from May 23rd to May 26th. As per our roles on the Public Education Interest Group's cabinet, Trustee Alum Zanov and I facilitated a year-end review consisting of all our projects our interest group has worked on for the past school year. Segments included mentions of menstrual equity investment, with myself collaborating with period property partners in the province to create informative videos regarding menstrual equity for prepubescent teens to be seen as QR codes in bathrooms in the next school year. Trustee Alum Zanov and I, Trustee Alum Zanov spoke to the strategic planning of the group for the next five years with major priorities in public education for student trustees being equitable solutions, opportunity access, and mental health-related subjects. Both Trustee Alum Zanov and I got to speak to our work with OPSPA and OSTA in reinforcing commitments to AI being a priority in public education, in the creation of a subcommittee within OPSPA targeted around AI to come in the following years, as well as AI being noted as a priority in OSTA ECO's vision document for the next five years.
Apart from that, although we participated in various PD sessions, highlight was the changemaker session, where 25-plus stakeholders in education engage in roundtable discussions with student trustees with respect to major topics in education. These range from the OPSPA, the Ontario's Principal Council, to Ontario's University Senate Alliance, the Francophones Student Trustees, and the Council of Ontario Directors of Education. This session inspires student trustees across the province and educated us on prospective individuals at the forefront of Ontario's education system.
With respect to our younger students that we represent, our junior council met on Tuesday, May 21st, for our final meeting of the school year at the Milton Staff Learning Center. Each student got to share what they've been up to in their schools, and updates ranged from spirit days to mental health activities to focus groups and so, so much more. Our Senate Regional Directors also organize activities for the young grade 5s and 6s to rotate between regarding key topics that affect students of their regions, as well as what the Senate regions have been up to, from opportunity newsletters to problem-solving to amplifying underrepresented voices. With Director Endes ending off the night with some inspiring words, Trustee Alum Zanov and I know these 20-plus students are destined for great things. Some may even be future student trustees in the making.
Moving on to the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium, which is the main event that the Student Senate organizes throughout the year. Hosted at Elsie McGill, it provides approximately 200 grade 7 to 8 students across the board the opportunity to participate in engaging workshops, network with their peers, and learn a bit more about leadership within the HDSB. We want to give the huge, big shout-out to our two Directors of Operations, Sabrina Nadeem and Kalina Cocken, for serving as a backbone of the event and getting all the logistical elements together.
The exciting updates just don't end. And another exciting update is the Milton and Halton Hills Senate organized the first-ever in-person Northern Forum on Monday, May 27th, at the Milton Staff Learning Center. Over 30-plus students attended and engaged in the informative session. They were educated on the student senate, their Northern trustees, all while hearing from Superintendent Fowler and Barnes, who joined us regarding the Northern schools they represent, as well as their exciting portfolios. Breakout sessions also took place, where the students got to express issues they felt affected the Northern students and how the Senate could be more inclusive to them. Findings included more opportunities for Northern students to have their voices heard, as well as potential town halls to be run by the Senate, open to all, especially to Northern students. Amidst pizza and trivia on their learnings for prizes, it was all around an amazing initiative. Shout-out to Sanders Tujana Navaretnam, a student at Elsie McGill Secondary School, who this event wouldn't be possible without.
And the last piece for our report today, Trustee Shrebalan and I are happy to announce that we'll be doing school visits. Over the next final weeks of our term, we will be touring numerous schools across the Halton region to get the opportunity to connect with the student body and pass on some of the perspectives for incoming student trustees to reference as they were planning for their awesome projects next year. And with that, Trustee Shrebalan and I would like to conclude our reports, but also share another little motion.
So we will be referring to the report for the 2024-25 student trustees to be passed, and these, for the student trustee elections for the 2024-25 school year took place on February 22nd, 2024. Although elections were conducted electronically, with all grade 7 to 12 students being eligible to vote, in addition, 75-plus election booths were set up to support voters across the HDSB elementary and secondary schools. 11,000 stickers were given out, and in total, over 5,400 grade 7 to 12 students participate in the student trustee elections, which doubles our voter turnout from the previous year. Record-breaking in HDSB history for us, so it was a huge success. There were 24 candidates from seven schools across four municipalities, with Caitlin Ho and Charlie Ochu, both in the gallery, being elected to serve as trustees in the 2024-25 school year.
And now we would like to read out the motion. Be resolved that the Halton University School Board accept the student trustee election results of February 22nd, 2024, and approve the appointments of Caitlin Ho and Charlie Ochu as student trustees for the Halton University School Board for the 2024-25 school year. Term effective August 1st, 2024.
Thank you very much. Here's Chair Oliver. Would you like to make this motion?
It is my pleasure to move the motion.
Trustee Bryden, would you like to second this motion?
Very much so.
Trustee Shrebalan and Alum Zanov, would you like to speak to this motion?
I think we spoke to all we have. Thank you, though.
Just wanted to give you a chance. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any debate? Seeing none? Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations to our new student trustees. Did you have more to say?
We have one final last. Can we call up our student trustee Alex to the front just so we could take a quick photo alongside our chair, Director Endes, Joanna?
I was going to call for a brief recess.
Oh, awesome.
Okay, perfect. We'll have a brief recess for a photo and so that our delegate can be brought online.
Thank you, and welcome back. The next item on our agenda is delegations. As per our delegation governance procedure, each delegate shall be allowed up to five minutes to present their delegation. Delegates must refrain from using derogatory language and from making statements that would personally identify individuals, including students, staff, community members, or trustees. Any delegate who fails to adhere to this restriction will be ruled out of order by the chair, and their presentation shall be immediately terminated. I'd like to welcome Roman Bruszczyk, who will be reading Martin Berta's delegation. I will be timing your delegation, and I will give you a wave when there is one minute remaining. You are allowed to speak up to five minutes for your delegation, and we expect that you'll be speaking the notes as prepared by Martin Berta, whenever you're ready.
Hello. I'm Roman. I will read Martin's delegation text. Dear trustees, my name is Martin Berta, and I am a parent of two children. in the HDSP public school system. I'm also an educator. I have been working as a professor at the University of Toronto for over 15 years. I want to thank the trustees for the opportunity to discuss a matter of governance related to the safe and accepting schools policy and the Education Act tonight. What brings me here are grave concerns about the current climate in HDSP schools that has continued to deteriorate over the last eight months. The HDSP policy on safe and accepting schools states that all students, staff, and members of the school community should feel safe at school and are deserving of a positive school climate that is inclusive, equitable, and accepting, regardless of any immutable characteristic, including but not limited to race, ancestry, place of origin, et cetera. The Education Act, along with other policies, are established to create expectations for behavior while applied to students, whether on school property, on buses, at school-related events or activities, or in other circumstances that could have an impact on school climate. I have been informed by the HDSP chair that anecdotal evidence on instances that could identify a specific school or person is not permissible as part of my delegation. I have obtained multiple such accounts of Jewish and non-Jewish students who feel unsafe and have directly offered anonymous testimonials. I cannot share them with you here, but should you wish to see them, I will be happy to send them to you over email. We do not need to go into specific instances. We all know the situation. During the last several months, we have all seen a new tendency of student-led walkouts at high schools. Vocal protests have been organized in schools disrupting learning. Jewish children were subjected to extreme discomfort, peer pressure, escalation, and threats. We have witnessed a stark rise in antisemitism, resulting in a terrifying experience for those who are affected. In my view, this is a violation of Canadian values of inclusivity and HDSP policies. It establishes a dangerous precedent if left unchallenged. As a Roman Catholic, I do not feel that I am a part of the conflict in the Middle East, waged not only on the ground but also globally through media and political action. However, every one of us will inevitably be drawn into the conflict the moment hatred and ideology starts spreading within our public school system and directly affect our children. There will never be an end to hostilities if indoctrination of children from a very young age spreads across the globe to liberal and inclusive societies that Canada aspires to embody. It is our collective responsibility to uphold our values of safety, community, and cohesion in our public schools in accordance with HDSP policies. At the university level, I have witnessed firsthand how radicalization of impressionable young people adversely affects their academic goals, incites intolerance to the views of others, and weakens inclusion. We cannot allow radicalization to progress to secondary and primary school-aged children. The time to do something about it is now. We must defend our principles of safe environment in our public schools. I would like to hear from the trustees how the HDSP Director of Education will enforce the current policy on safe and accepting schools, upholding Section 306 of the Education Act in accordance with the Ontario Programme Memorandum 145. Thank you for your attention. I appreciate your consideration of these important issues.
Thank you very much. That was very well read and very well written. So thank you to both Martin and Roman for that delegation. Uh, we now have up to 10 minutes for questions from trustees and so I am looking to the speakers list to see if there are any. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, uh, through the chair, through the chair. Just a clarification. This is intended to be questions of clarification for the delegate, not for staff? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Trustee Shuttleworth.
Uh, thank you through you, Chair. Not a question, just a comment, just to say thank you, as, as you said, for such a well-written and produced speech. We really appreciate the enlightenment. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, I'd like to thank you very much for bringing Martin's delegation forward and we appreciate it very much. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you for your opportunity. Bye-bye.
We are now up to Section 3 on our consent agenda. For approval, we have Halton District School Board meeting minutes from May 1st, 2024, as well as a special meeting on May 22nd, 2024. For receipt, we have the following information items: the order paper, board report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, administrative procedure review schedule, approved minutes of the Committee of the Hall, April 17, 2024, and revisions to 2024-2025 school bell times. In addition, we have a number of letters in, in correspondence um, that are there for um, public edification. I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the HDSP approve the consent agenda and receive the information items for June 5th, 2024. Trustee Ahmed, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move that motion.
Trustee Baxter, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, I would like to second and also pull an item when you get to that, please.
Okay, are there any items that need to be pulled? Which item would you like pulled, Trustee Baxter?
Uh, 3.2.3, please. The Policy and Governance Procedure Review Schedule.
Okay, and... Trustee Rocha.
Um, yes, I'd like a few items pulled. So 3.2.2, the board report schedule. 3.2.6, revisions to the school bell times. 3.3.3, the letter from the Chair of the Waterloo Region.
Okay, so we will start with the board report schedule and go in order. Uh, what is it on the board report schedule that you would like to discuss?
Uh, thank you, yes. Uh, with respect to the report, from what I understand from this evening's presentation is that the, the survey was held in May of 2023 and we're only being um, presented with the results a year later. So I would ask that going forward, that this particular report be moved to the fall so that we are presented with data that's more timely. Because by now, it's been another year, another round of inter, uh, surveys have gone out either through Have Your Say or through some other methods. So um, with that, this one specifically, I would hope we could move it to the fall. And by the same token, maybe um, the admin team could look at all the reports to ensure that when they're being made to the Board of Trustees, that they're being made in a, in a, in a more timely manner, if any other changes are required.
Director Ennis, would you like to respond?
Well, certainly. Thank you so much for that. We accept that.
And we'll move to um, the one that Trustee Baxter wanted because it's next, the Policy and Governance Procedure Review Schedule.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. I had a question about the review date for safe and accepting schools. It's shown in this report um, as the review being done in October of this year, which is fantastic. Um, but I noted when I looked at the um, policy itself, it has a review date of February 2025. So I just wanted to confirm that we will be um, seeing updates to that in October, so in a few months. Thank you.
Director Ennis, do you have a response for that?
Thank you. Um, yes, we are, uh, we are looking to review it for October of this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next item was revisions to school bell times. Trustee Rocha.
Uh, yes, through the chair. Um, I reviewed the, uh, the school bell times and although my question doesn't impact any of our high schools, um, I did notice um, a big shift in the Catholic Board where school was starting eight in the morning. And I'm thinking, we have this conversation every year where high school times are starting earlier in the day. And what I'm hoping is that um, I wonder if perhaps an explanation can be given to us and to the public as to how these decisions are made and if any research is being done to actually change the timing later in the day because of the sleepy teenage brain. Um, so what type of consulting does the H, is the HSTS doing when proposing earlier high school times?
And through the chair, thank you for that question. Uh, in uh, I guess it's a two-part question. In this particular case and the current um, parameters, uh, all of the secondary schools for both our Board and the Cotermans Board, which are both serviced by Halton Student Transportation Services, are starting first and that was a, a decision made as a result on a, of a provincial efficiency study that was required of all uh, school boards when the consortiums came into place. And uh, at that point in time, uh, there were parameters set in place by the um, I'll say partner boards because the French boards at the time were part of that consortium. Uh, in terms of how much time or between what times the school bells should start and so forth. Working through that in trying to uh, find as many efficiencies and um, double, triple runs on one bus, uh, trying to, to reduce the number of buses, uh, the secondary schools were first because there's more flexibility when the students being older can be dropped before bell times and gives more time to pick up two elementary schools afterwards in terms of uh, collecting students. So that was done from a perspective of efficiency and we've, we've done, uh, we followed those parameters until now. Um, with the respect of, you know, the um, Catholic schools being earlier in this report is more in terms of adding a period to their day. So it's a little bit different. It was not a transportation decision. It was just a way to make it a bit lo, a, a longer for, to meet their curriculum needs and um, capacity. Going forward, in the budget that is being presented today, the draft budget, the power proportion of a study to look at efficiencies. So again, it's, it's based on efficiencies, not based on uh, any scientific research in terms of the times for students, you know, to start school. But it, we would be looking at uh, a complete efficiency review. So there's, there's funding proposed in the budget for transportation to do an efficiency review that would consider changing parameters. And uh, if, you, you know, we would be expanding the, the parameter limitations in order to give more flexibility and also look at shifting elementary schools first and secondary schools later and see what that means from a, a perspective of efficiency. So we would know a bit more then, but it would also depend on how flexible the Board of Trustees for the both boards that are uh, part of the consortium would be in terms of being flexible with parameter changes.
Uh, is your question regarding this item? Okay, go ahead, Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. Um, to, to clarify on Trustee Rocha's question, the, could you ta, speak a little bit more to the decision process? Um, and uh, this is presented as the school bell times being determined by HSTS. Are they the deciding body as to when those school bells are set? Um, and so, start with Eric.
So the, the short answer is yes. However, they're within the parameters that we had identified and agreed to at the beginning. Uh, where, and you know, they have been captured in the policies and operating procedures so that we don't deviate or shift a school's bell time by more than 15 to 20 minutes. Uh, so trying to, to not, you know, if a school starts at eight and we would do a, an efficiency study, we would not want to put them at 9:20. So it would have to be working with their current bell time. So there's some parameters there. But within the parameters that they were giving, yes, every year, they're mandated through the Board of Trustees and the Board of Directors um, to HSTS to continue the efficiency study and where they can uh, combine routes by, by changing some bell times, they will.
So if the upcoming study is through a lens of efficiency, um, and there is a decision that needs to be made, but it's a, it's a larger scope where we're going to consider more than 15-minute changes, we're going to consider the whole flip-flop process. Um, how are the parameters, the decision-making parameters for that determined? And, and who controls that, uh, that input into what those parameters will be?
That is an excellent question. So the, the main purpose of the study is an efficiency study. Um, as trustees know, that the funding has changed for transportation. In, in our case, we've lost funding compared to the old formula. So we, for next year, we get 4% less funding than we've got two years ago, for example. So we have to really look at how we can contain costs within student transportation so that we don't have to compensate from elsewhere in the budget. So the lens is through efficiencies. But, but in order to achieve efficiencies, we would be looking at uh, opening up the parameters and bringing that back for discussion. If one member board would try to make a decision that impacts the efficiencies currently in place, the agreement, the HSTS agreement, um, um, it states that any loss in efficiencies is a cost of the board that is making that decision. So we would have to be very careful um, that making a change is, would be also efficient and not impact the cost of the member board, of the other member board.
Do you have a follow-up, Trustee Bryden?
Um, I, I guess the question was the, the parameters. Is the only parameter considered deficiency? And, and if so, how uh, is that written into the HSTS agreement?
Sorry, so parameters are time. So when the bell times, for sure, is opening up, do we want schools to start at 7:30? Do you want them to start at 10? So how much of a lag between the schools, the first school that starts and the last one that starts is acceptable is one parameter. The distance is another parameter. So we do have some flexibility to say, do we want to stay with the current eligibility walking distance? Or do we want to increase the walking distance? And therefore, fewer students would be eligible. Uh, so there's a, a number of parameters we would look at. We would look at programs. We, we would open everything up. Um, the more restrictions we would impose, the less you have to work with. But one of the scenarios would be less to no restrictions and then would, we would work backwards on different scenarios.
Thank you very much. Uh, Trustee Alomjanov.
Uh, thank you through you, Chair. Um, so it makes sense why these changes are being made, but I just have a small clarification question regarding how, you know, pushing school 10 minutes later or 10 minutes earlier impacts the distribution of, you know, the various aspects of the school day. So does it cut into the, like, instruction time at all? Or would it impact when, you know, nutritional breaks?
And thank you for the question. So in uh, particular, those elementary schools uh, for, for us that are uh, adding 10 days, I'm sorry, 10 minutes, uh, that is simply uh, to achieve um, uh, sorry, it's not adding, it's actually reducing it by 10 minutes to achieve two 40-minute instructional um, breaks. So it doesn't impact at all the minutes of instruction. It only impacts the nutritional breaks. And currently, most schools have two 40-minute uh, breaks and there's a few more that we are hoping through efficiencies that we can accommodate. So every year, we do a few uh, in order for consistency across the system.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was just, sorry, small follow-up. So that means that basically in every elementary school across Halton, there is a same amount of instructional time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And uh, final speaker, Trustee Amos.
Thank you through you. Um, so this has been an ongoing topic of discussion and I just was looking through old emails and files that I have. And back in 2017, when I was Chair, we held some joint meetings with the Halton Catholic District School Board to discuss exactly this, the um, uh, about uh, bell times for high schools and tried to set some common parameters. Um, our Cotermans Board was not as um, as for changing the times as we were. Um, but at that time, HSTS did commit to um, trying to see if they could get secondary times um, later, if it was a possibility, but also included efficiencies. but also included efficiencies, as I recall. So unfortunately, we are always tied up with this efficiencies and it's becoming even more of a problem now with less money, which I know we'll hear about soon. But in order to be able to do things better for students, it has been proven, and there's so much research out there now that shows that high schools should not start before probably nine o'clock, eight-thirty might be. But the fact that with the circadian rhythms of, of high school students, they're, unless their first period is a highly active period that they keep moving like gym or something, those periods for some of those students, they struggle. So I would really like the fact, I'd like to hear from, so thank you Superintendent Nagui, the fact that you are going to look at potentially switching the high school times to later as the efficiency studies happen. But I think it's really important, if we want to put students first, we need to look at putting things in place that will support them the best way they can. And that, and that is a big, would be a big benefit to their mental health as well because if they get more sleep and they're more rested, they're going to be a better student and they're going to be able to deal with things better. And it's also proven that they, they could be a better athlete for the school and everything else because they've had more sleep. So anyways, thank you for saying that you will look at it and I'm going to hold you to it because this is really important for those high school students. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will now move on to the last item that was asked to be pulled and that is the letter from the Halton, not the Halton, the Waterloo Region District School Board. And would you like to speak to that, Trustee Rocha?
Yes, thank you. So through the chair, the reason why I asked for the letter to be pulled, not that there's anything wrong with the letter, one, I want to acknowledge that the Minister of Finance has invested or will invest $1 billion over five years to support national school food programs. The question I have this evening is, do we know how much money the HDSP will receive from this program? And how big of a need does our board have when it comes to food insecurity for our students?
Director Anis, would you like to respond?
Thank you so much, Superintendent Nagui.
Thank you. And through the chair to Trustee Rocha. What I can tell you is the Halton Food For Thought and their partners invest about a million dollars in our schools, in our school food program currently. The money does flow through them to the schools. So at, at this point in time, we had asked the ministry if they know how the, the funding, the federal funding, the $1 billion will be distributed to school boards or partners. I did not get a response, so they, there was something that they were still looking into and I haven't heard back since. It is possible and I would expect that it would flow to these sort of partners provincially and through them would flow to the schools as per the need that they assess. So I don't know what our share is yet, but if we do find more, we will get back to you.
Go ahead, Director Anis.
Thank you for the question, Trustee Rocha. This is a very timely question and certainly we know and understand through some of our local partners that this need is grave and getting more and more dire for our families in our community. And so we welcome this announcement and we certainly hope for the flow-through that will support and benefit our students because the need within our board is getting more and more dire each year.
Okay, so it's just a follow-up. I was, I was considering requesting a motion so that the Chair could write a letter to the Minister of Finance, but I think I'm going to hold off on that until such time we have numbers available so that if we're going to write a letter requesting additional funding, we know how much more to ask for. So I'm going to hold on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Rocha. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent and we are now up to section four, items for ratification action. Our first action item for this evening is the school naming for Milton Southwest Number Twelve Public School, Report 24074, submitted by Manager Francie. And as Manager Francie prepares to speak to that, I will put the first motion on the floor, which reads, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board consider the name, the following names for the new school, Milton Southwest Number Twelve Public School, located at 815 Kennedy Circle West in Milton, Cedar Ridge, Chowquen Lee, Harmony Grove, Mary Ann Shad, Milton Meadows. Trustee Ahmed, would you make this motion?
Yes, I would.
Vice Chair Oliver, would you second this motion?
I'll second the motion.
Manager Francie, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to all trustees, this report was presented at the May 22 Committee of the Whole and is being presented for decision this evening. The report has been updated with additional information requested by trustees at and following the May 22 Committee of the Whole meeting. As you know, this school is opening to students since September, so we do know how excited the principal and the school community are to name this school and begin forming their school culture. Please let me know if you have any questions on the updated report. Thanks.
Next, I'm going to ask Trustee Ahmed as the trustee for the new school, would you like to speak to the discernment process and the list of names presented in this report?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. And yes, so we went through a very rigorous process and had very, like many meetings to shortlist five of these names. And all of these names are very good names, but I still feel that Cedar Ridge is, is the one that like resonates with me the most. So I would personally think that Cedar Ridge is the, the one to go.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Oliver, as the trustee from outside the area, would you like to speak to the discernment process and the list of names presented in this report?
Sure, thank you very much. So General Manager Francie provided us with the information at Committee of the Whole and through the report. So I would like to provide some context around the submissions that were made and the sentiments that were shared. Given the variety of submissions and commentary provided, it is interesting to note that over 30% of submissions offered a variety of unique names and did not include people's names, namely the submissions focused on geography, local landmarks, flora, fauna, concepts related to children, education, learning and community, and words that recognized indigenous history, languages and peoples. Included in the original shortlist were names of indigenous people, however, they chose to remove themselves from the process. For example, Marie Sinclair, Sinclair's names was suggested, staff reached out to him, he respectfully declined and indicated that he felt it should be a local name. There were also indigenous words that were brought forward as potential name. However, due to the complexities of indigenous languages and translations, sorry, the translations could not all be verified and the word did not make the shortlist. For the reasons outlined, the final list does not have any indigenous connected names. We want the public to know that there was an attempt at bringing an indigenous name forward. The naming of a school is an involved process that brings forward many voices and identities. It is noteworthy that a community rep advocated for naming the school by a natural name to reflect the beautiful lands, environment and landmarks for which Milton, Milton is very well-known. The committee put forward five, three of which are nature-related. You have the information on the two individuals, so I'll provide some more context with respect to the three nature name options. The following sentiments were expressed about the word harmony in Harmony Grove, which appeared in several different submissions, suggesting unity, collaboration, balanced learning atmosphere, making it a fitting choice for an educational institution, speaking to universal value of peace and coexistence, a place where diversity is celebrated, reflecting positive inclusive environment that an elementary school should embody, commitment to fostering a diverse and unified community, dedication to inclusivity, respect among students and staff, suggesting a place where diverse elements come together to create cohesive community. Milton Meadows was recommended because the area where the school is located can aptly be labeled as such, with the neighborhood street names reflecting green, garden-like, plant-based themes around the school location and including the Coben Neighborhood Park nearby. And Cedar Ridge was recommended in honor of the thousand-year-old trees growing from the rock ridges in Rattlesnake Point Conservation Area, which as you know, has been awarded the prestigious designation of World Biosphere Reserve by UNESCO. In fact, there were a number of unique submissions, each with the cedar trees in mind, and the following sentiments were expressed. A nod to Milton's environment while providing a straightforward and easily recognizable identity for an elementary school. Evocative name that reflects Milton's natural surroundings. Historical significance in various cultures symbolizing strength, resilience and growth. Positive connotations associated with growth, stability and natural beauty, reflecting local geography and environment. Suggesting growth and resilience, common to the Milton area and symbolizing strength. The name is secular, inclusive and promotes a positive image. The name conveys a sense of serenity, community and strength, making it a fitting choice for an elementary school. And so I hope that this helps to shed some light on the types of submissions that were made and the sentiments that were expressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of the speakers. And I see we do have a speakers list. I will go straight to Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I, I thought the report was all written and my thanks to the committee that put forward as with Trustee Ahmed, who is the trustee for the area, and I take his, his opinion in great value. And reading about the cedar trees, I'm leaning towards Cedar Ridge. And I, for me, it was because one of the things that convinced me, I remember several years ago being in a remote fly-in First Nation village, 500 kilometers north of Thunder Bay called Kitchamakasip, and taking part in a cedar tea ceremony and talking about the cedar and, and steeping the branches in the tea and the importance of the cedar within the indigenous culture in terms of health. And that made me want to research it a little bit more. So I went to the Indigenous Foundation's website and realized that the cedar is the tree of life and it's used by indigenous people for protection, ceremony and in daily life. Cedar provides material for big houses, totem poles, rope and cooking boxes, and the cedar bark was used to create clothing, baguette and household items such as blankets and baskets. The giant trees were also used for dugout canoes. All parts of the cedar tree were used to sustain life, which I found absolutely fascinating. My other reasoning is, one of the advantages to being a five-term trustee is, is I tend to be fairly well-known in the board and people do reach out to me quite often. And I was quite surprised when some of the staff members for the new school reached out to me and then they talked about what they were looking and they also asked me to consider Cedar Ridge because one of the key points of the school's mission will be, is hopefully to be centering indigenous perspectives. And so they brought that forward to me. And they also raised a concern, I did not realize, when we name a school after a person, we have the family's permission to put the, the name on the outside of the building, but therefore going forward, if you want to do logos or mascots or anything else different with that name, you've got to go back to the family, you've got to get that permission. And that can create a lot of red tape and bureaucracy and just in terms of times and that. I know this school is, I believe it's opening in September, and so that possible delay in bureaucracy was another reason that I was leaning toward the natural names, in particular Cedar Ridge. So Cedar Ridge will be the name that I'm supporting tonight and that's my reasoning.
Thank you very much, Trustee Daniele. Trustee Rocha.
At this moment, I'm not going to express support for any name, but I am going to express anti-support for two names. I couldn't think of the opposite. So of the five names, I cannot and will not support Milton Meadows, only because it does contravene one of the guiding principles in our naming policy, which stipulates that all names should be distinct from other HDSP names. Currently, we do have a school called Milton District High School and we also have a school called Rolling Meadows. So Rolling Meadows, I could have lived with, but we already have a Milton district in Milton, so I will not support Milton. And the other one is Mary Ann Shad, although I admire what she has done. The TDSB already has a school named after her, so if we're considering naming it after a person, I would like to consider someone who doesn't yet have a school named after them. So I am open for your thoughts on the other three names. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And moving on to Trustee Shutterworth.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I really struggle with names because I think about how you feel when you're at a school and I think about how proud you want to be about, of the school that you're at. For me, having a personal connection to a person makes that pride stronger. I think of some of the name, the school names that we have right now, so Chris Hatfield or Dr. David R. Williams, those names that have people that you can, you know what they've done, you see their, Elsie McGill, you see what they've done. And I think that name of a person gives depth to the meaning of the school. I know, Trustee Ahmed, you said that you, you prefer the Cedar Ridge. So my question for Trustee Ahmed and Trustee, Vice Chair Oliver, is from the committee, was there strong support from other people for a particular name?
To the best of my knowledge, the, the poll was like equally distributed and we had equal support for all these names that we shortlisted.
One of the community reps, the rep for the area in fact, was strongly in favor of a natural name.
Thank you. I'm struggling between two. Thank you very much. And now Trustee Gray has been reading patiently.
Thank you so much for the discussion tonight on this topic. And I want to say thanks to all of the research that has been conducted by both Trustee Oliver and Trustee Daniele. I too also did some research and I feel very confident in moving forward and supporting Cedar Ridge as a name that would be most appropriate for this new school. So thank you. I just want to echo, echo really, the sentiments and information shared tonight by both Trustee Oliver and Daniele. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And moving on to final speaker, Trustee Shrubalan.
Thank you, Chair. And through the chair, I just want to echo Trustee, Vice Chair Oliver's and some of the other trustees' sentiments surrounding a non-person name for the school in consultation with our Senate, with Sujana sitting as a rep on this committee. She brought back a lot of the learnings from the committee and we did a lot of surveying with our Senate and our senators were in strong favor of a not school, not person name. As someone who has attended two schools in Milton named after people, I do understand Trustee Shutterworth's sentiments, there is a lot of pride that goes into a name of such nature, but just as a reminder of what occurred with the renaming of St. Francis Xavier as our Catholic counterpart in the area, I was having a lot of friends who attended that school, a lot of the struggle when schools are renamed of that nature and when conversations are revealed of that nature, it can be very detrimental on students' well-being. So that's why I will be in favor of the Cedar Ridge name as well as through our Senate names of any nature that are not person names. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that is none to our speakers list. I too will be supporting the name Cedar Ridge. I, I love cedars. I have my great-grandmother's cedar chest in my house. I have cedar trees in my backyard. I love the smell, I love the feel, and whenever I smell cedar, it reminds me of my grandmother. So a little bit of a personal connection there, but I was, I was torn between that one and one of the other names and just today came to the conclusion that Cedar Ridge would be my vote as well. So the process going forward, trustees will now email the school name they support to Carolina Cohen. Director Anis will read each ballot aloud, including the name of the trustee and the school name they selected. So please email the name that you prefer. Oh, yeah, first we have to vote on the motion. Sorry about that. Is there any debate on? Is there any debate on the motion?
Point of order? What motion is, are we voting on right now?
That the first, that all five of the names are nominated, so that we can now then cast ballots on those five names.
Oh, okay.
Please cast your votes. Trustee Zhang, please cast your vote. Thank you very much. That passes, but not unanimously. There is one vote against, and that was by trustee Rocha. So now we will email the school name that we support to general manager Con. Trustee Gray, is your hand up? We really do need to have the Jeopardy music for these moments.
We have the results of the first round. The following trustees voted for Cedar Ridge. Trustee Zhang. Trustee Danielli. Trustee Amos. Trustee Baxter. Trustee Gray. Trustee Ahmed. Trustee Shuttleworth. Chair Collard. Vice-chair Oliver. Student trustee Alen Jono. And Shribalan. The following trustees voted for the name Chow Hen Lee. Trustee Rocha. And trustee Bryden.
Thank you very much, Director Ennis. The name that will be going on the motion to name the school will be Cedar Ridge. There is a clear majority. I will now read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board name the new school Milton Southwest Number 12 P.S., located at 815 Kennedy Circle West in Milton, Cedar Ridge. Trustee Ahmed, would you like to make this motion?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Trustee Danielli, would you second this motion?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any debate? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
That would be affirmative from Gray.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. The new school is to be named Cedar Ridge. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 4.1.2, Oakville Northeast Number 3 and Number 5 Boundary Review Study Amendment to Implementation, submitted by manager Tebow. I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the revised implementation document regarding option seven for the new boundaries in Oakville Northeast Number 3 and Number 5 Boundary Review Study area as presented in appendix A of report 24076. Trustee Amos, would you make this motion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Baxter, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Manager Tebow, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, please, and thank you, trustees. So the purpose of this report tonight is in particular to one specific zone that we've identified, that we've moved from one being Dr. David R. Williams School Zone to now that's being Zone H, which is shown as figure one in the attached report. And what we've noted is that when we were implementing this zone, we wanted to start slowly with JK, SKs moving in for next year and then phasing in the remaining years thereafter, but any new move-ins we would direct to Udunawi, because it was a reduction in transportation needs, because they are fully walkable to Udunawi. What we've noted since then, as we've been going through the pre-registration process at this point in time, is that we've seen a number of students remove themselves from the French immersion program instead of going to Forest Trail, so we had a number of these kids being repatriated back to Udunawi. We've seen actually a pretty good increase in students actually moving into the community within both Zone G and H, which are fully built out, so we're still seeing some new move-ins there, as well as a higher proportion of high-density yields than we initially planned for. When we did it, we actually looked at going at an aggressive rate with our high-density, and it seems like, again, the housing choices are going towards that. So what we're proposing as part of this is to make it a full phase-in over the eight years, so as opposed to having new move-ins go to Udunawi, we'll just say, you know what, anybody that's within that grade range, we're going to keep you at Dr. David R. Williams as that phases out. And note, Dr. David R. Williams is also phasing out three grades of the FI program, so they do have the capacity to take on these students, and there is transportation already available within that area as we're phasing it out. And that way, it'll just take some of the pressure off of Udunawi, which we're already adding some there with the lower FI take-up and the increase in move-ins there. And that way, we're just kind of balancing things out between Udunawi, Dr. David R. Williams. So yeah, proposal is just to remove that one clause where new move-ins would be directed to Udunawi, and it would just be strictly a phase-in. And last one, at least, I just want to clarify that this would only impact any new registrations coming in after, if this were to approve afterwards. Students that have already moved into the area and have already registered at Udunawi, we would certainly honor that, so it'd be any changes thereafter, any move-ins, so there'd be no direct impact. I'm happy to take any further questions.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any speakers on the speaker's list. Does anyone have any questions for manager Tebow? I think the report was pretty self-explanatory. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, so thank you very much for your presentation. We will cast our votes. Trustee Ahmed has left the room, okay? And that passes unanimously by all trustees present. Thank you very much, manager Tebow. The next item is 4.1.3, External Audit and Regional Internal Audit Plans, report 24077, submitted by trustee Danielli. We will be voting on these motions separately as they are not linked. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the external audit plans and the fees of $85,200 excluding applicable taxes attached as appendix A for the fiscal year ending August 31, 2024, prepared by the board's external auditors, Deloitte LLP. Trustee Danielli, would you make this motion?
Thank you, yes, I would.
Trustee Rocha, would you second this motion?
Yes.
Trustee Danielli, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you very much. The report is before you with the background and the rationale. I would be open to questions, but I would also suggest that perhaps superintendent Nagoy would be in a better position to answer any questions specific to this report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding this item? Seeing none, we will cast our votes. Thank you, and that passes unanimously. And for the second item, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the 2024-2025 Regional Internal Audit Plan, which includes a review of the repairs and maintenance process plus follow-up of any remaining action plans attached as appendix B. Trustee Danielli, would you make this motion?
Thank you, yes, I would.
Trustee Bryden, would you second this motion?
Yes.
Trustee Danielli, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you, as before, the report is before you, and superintendent Nagoy and I are available for questions.
I am not seeing any speakers to this motion. Okay, I will put it up for the vote. And once again, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your votes. Item 4.1.4, Risk Management Policy Review, submitted by superintendent Nagoy, and I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the revised risk management policy and revoke all prior versions. Trustee Zhang, would you make this motion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Shuttleworth, would you second this motion?
Sure.
Thank you. And superintendent Nagoy, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you. There's only minor changes to terminology in the actual policy and the accompanying procedure, and there is one amendment that will be on the website, which is to take away any mention of the operational leadership governance procedure, which has been replaced. Thank you.
Are there any questions for superintendent Nagoy? Trustee Rocha.
Yeah, through the chair. I understand this is the policy, and my question is probably more of a procedural, but how often is risk, is a risk assessment conducted?
Thank you for the chair to trustee Rocha. What we have done is link the strategic risk management to the multi-year plan. As the multi-year plan is being refreshed, once we have the new strategic priorities, the plan is to bring it back to the board to assess again if the risk tolerance has changed, reassess the key risks. So both the Board of Trustees and the external members of the Audit Committee, which share the oversight over risk management, will go for the exercise of assessing the key risks once again. So I would say every four years is when we would do this exercise, or the duration of the multi-year plan, which could vary. Sometimes it's not always a four-year plan.
Okay, so follow-up. And maybe this is more of a governance question, but if we are conducting a risk assessment every four years, and we review our policies every four years, would it be beneficial to only bring the risk management policy for review once a risk assessment has been done? Because from what I'm seeing is, right now, we're approving this updated policy to reflect our risk, our tolerance for risk from four years ago, and we're about to embark on that process, at which time this policy may change because our appetite for risk may change. So because this is updated right now, I think that on a go-forward basis, we should tie the updating of the risk management policy to after the assessment's been conducted to avoid you coming to the board multiple times for review. Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely. So I think it's a matter of timing, because this was done at a time in advance of implementing the framework, and the expectation was that perhaps this would align with the time of the new MYP being developed. So certainly, this will be coming back again if the risk appetite changes. So in the fall, we will bring it back with the revision, and then the four years from that point on will be the fall of the next four years.
Thank you. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. Through your chair to superintendent Nagoy. So you used a different term there. So you said risk, no, before, tolerance. And I'm looking at the terminology in here, and that is not in there. So what my question was going to be in terms of the difference between risk appetite versus risks tolerance, how do we weigh that out? And how do we do that? And that's my question.
That's a good question. So the risk appetite is looking at overall, what is our willingness to accept certain degree of risk, and then the risk tolerance would be more of the limit. So they do go a bit hand in hand, but what we're looking at in terms of the Board of Trustees, they set the tone for risk, so it's setting the risk appetite, and then we work on the strategic risk management framework within that direction in terms of what are those risks that make it on the top key risks that we have to monitor, that we then monitor twice a year in order to ensure that the strategic priorities are being supported and met.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, please cast your votes. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Our next item is 4.1.5, Board Governance Bylaw Amendments, report 24079, submitted by the Governance Document Review Standing Committee, and I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the Board Governance Bylaw with the recommendations listed in report 24079, and that all prior versions be revoked. Trustee Bryden, would you make this motion?
I would.
Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
Yes, I second.
Trustee Bryden, would you like to speak to this report?
Most of the pieces in here were covered in the committee hall meeting. We did have a couple of housekeeping changes recommended as this policy came forward. Could I ask manager Con to quickly clarify if those are in the version that is linked to the agenda or not? No. So I would propose that we adopt those housekeeping items as proposed by trustee Rocha.
Thank you. Are there any questions for trustee Bryden? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. The next item is 4.1.6, Appointments to Committees and Other Rules Governance Procedure Review, report 24080, submitted by the Governance Document Review Standing Committee, and I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the Board Governance Bylaw with the recommendations listed in report 24079, and that all prior versions be revoked. Trustee Bryden, would you make this motion?
I would.
Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
Yes, I second.
Trustee Bryden, would you like to speak to this report?
Most of the pieces in here were covered in the committee hall meeting. We did have a couple of housekeeping changes recommended as this policy came forward. Could I ask manager Con to quickly clarify if those are in the version that is linked to the agenda or not? No. So I would propose that we adopt those housekeeping items as proposed by trustee Rocha.
Thank you. Are there any questions for trustee Bryden? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. The next item is 4.1.6, Appointments to Committees and Other Rules Governance Procedure Review, report 24080, submitted by the Governance Document Review Standing Committee. Rules Governance Procedure Review with the recommendations listed in Report two four zero eight zero, and that all prior versions be revoked. Trustee Brydon, would you make this motion?
Yes.
Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
I second.
Trustee Brydon, would you like to speak to the report?
Again, this, this report was previously discussed. We have had a flag. I'll actually let, let trustees speak to the, the questions that are, are bubbled up around one of, one of the issues in this, because I think they will propose it better than I will.
Are there any questions? Trustee Baxter?
Thank you. Through the chair, my question is about appendix C, specifically the trustee-led committees. The first bullet point is the Director's Performance Appraisal. I know we discussed this at Committee of the Whole, but I didn't see a change made as a result. As it's written now, it does not comply with the regulation, which is in effect. So I'm just concerned about making a change that would not be in compliance with, with the regulations, specifically the number of trustees permitted to be on the committee, and the idea of co-chairs is not, not supported by the regulation.
The amendment can be made. It's a limit of seven, right?
No, the regulation requires a limit of five trustees and one chair who is selected by those trustees at the first meeting.
For, for the DPA?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can make that change.
And then the staggered two or three-year term.
Would have to be removed since there would only be one.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none?
Sorry, can I jump back?
Please cast your votes. Thank you very much. That passes yet again unanimously. I appreciate that this evening. Next on our agenda. To go back to my other form. Four point one point seven, OPSA Board of Directors Representative, Report two four zero eight one, submitted by the Striking Committee. Be it resolved that the HDSB OPSA Director for the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year be trustee Jean Gray. This, the term of this appointment will end at the twenty twenty-five OPSA AGM and ISO move. Trustee Daniele, would you second this motion?
Thank you, yes, I would.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We had the conversation at Committee of the Whole. We had a, an expression of interest, and only trustee Gray indicated an interest in this role. Please let me know if there are any questions. Seeing none. Please cast your votes. And thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Congratulations to trustee Gray. Item four point two for future action. Four point two point one, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five draft budget, Report two four zero eight two, submitted by Superintendent Nagoy. Superintendent Nagoy, would you like to speak to your report?
I would actually call, with us being two minutes, two hours into the meeting, for a five-minute recess or via break.
Sounds good. Five-minute recess. Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. Would you like to speak to your report now?
Thank you. And through the chair to all trustees, this evening, we have the budget draft report in the package, and we've prepared a presentation. There's a lot of slides for your information and the general public that breaks down the operating budget and, and information on the capital budget. We will not go through all of them, but I did want to point out a few things as we are summarizing where we are landing. And the trustees and the senior staff have had many discussions since December around the, the draft budget, so this is the culmination of all that work. So this, I, I'm just going to go through an update and summary of revenue and expenses. What are the proposed reductions and some additions for next year? Where are our remaining budget pressures and the financial position and requirement for an in-year deficit elimination plan that will require ministry approval? So starting with revenue for next year, as it compares to the current year revised budget, you will notice that overall, the provincial grants or the core education funding, which is that top line, has increased by thirty-nine point eight million. However, that includes remedy payment that relate to central agreement negotiations and free years of labor provisions, in addition to some increases for inflation to part of the funding formula. And, and we'll go through it in a bit more detail, because I know that is a large number. However, the costs associated with that number are even higher. And as we move down, the provincial grants other, which are temporary one-time investments, have decreased by over four million. Most of that is the elimination of the destreaming supports, which we've had thirty-three staff that were funded through that in the current year, and they're not continuing that next year. Investment income has, show, is showing a reduction as a result of interest rates coming down and just our cash flow position for the year. And other fees and revenues, most of that relates to education development charges, which is not something that is part of compliance or the operating budget. That is set aside to purchase sites for future schools in growth areas. So we cannot count on that in terms of an operating budget. So really, what we are looking at is the lines above that in terms of the overall grant increase year over year. And on the next slide. Actually, this is just highlighting some of the changes in the core education funding. There has been an increase to the transportation funding formula. This is a new formula that was introduced this current year, so next year will be year two, so there's going to be three percent increase year over year. However, when we look to compare to the old formula, our funding for transportation is about four percent less than twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three under the old formula. There has been some investments in special education, professional assessments that were transferred into the core education funding, and a two percent increase in the benchmarks for the non-salaried staffing, or sorry, non-salaried benchmarks for a school repair and maintenance. However, there were some components that were taken out, such as the enhanced ventilation and safe and clean schools. So it sort of offsets that increase. There are some additional areas that were confirmed, so all of the supports for student funds are now confirmed at six point three million and are continuing until twenty twenty-six. On the next slide, we just wanted to break down the actual provincial funding that we're looking at, so outside of the other revenue sources that are not ministry-funded and that are not out of compliance. We're looking at the core education funding and so that's our main education, our main revenue source. So how does that break down in terms of the additional funding? We have, sorry, where are we on expense? Sorry, there we go. One more. We're going to skip for that. Sorry, I, I was looking at how the core education funding has increased year over year, so that thirty-nine million. So most of that, it relates to, over twenty-eight million relates to back pay for remedy to the prior year central agreement, and about sixteen million would relate to everything else, which includes the labor provision for the current term, as well as keeping up with costs, which would be the increases in any benchmark that are not salary-related. We did lose some revenue as a result of enrollment decline, and there was a change in deferred revenue year over year. So in terms of, you know, by contrast, in terms of the actual increases to our costs, we're looking at the increase due to labor provisions, the remedy, step movements, and statutory and insured benefits. Only that is about forty-six million. So we're already short in terms of funding. And then we're looking at an increase in supply staffing budget year over year, which is impacted by both whether it's attendance trends or, in this case, there's compensation increase for the daily rate that has been centrally negotiated, as well as increases in our other operating areas that are not staffing-related. And we're looking at a forty-nine point three million in increases to expenses. So just looking at those components alone, the core education funding falls short to our operating cost by nine point five million. So that sort of sets the stage in terms of our decisions that had to be made for the year in order to find efficiencies and reductions, in order to eliminate the structural deficit, address enrollment decline, and provide a balanced budget, safe and except for one-time items that are on the in-year deficit elimination plan. So going to the next slide. This slide has been presented to trustees a few times before and has not really changed since March. This was our proposed savings and efficiencies overall. So we are proposing over ten million dollars in reductions that include reductions in central and program teaching positions and support positions, elementary and secondary teaching positions and programs, special education, student mental health and well-being, and a number of other areas within our budget. So that's a total savings of ten point three million and a total reduction in staffing So that's a total savings of 10.3 million and a total reduction in staffing of just over 94. The in-year deficit elimination plan totals 1.8 million. That means that the budget that will be up for approval at the next board meeting will be a deficit budget of 1.8 million, which we are going to be requesting both that the trustees approve the use of reserves towards this amount and also that the ministry approves by regulation use of our reserves. These are one-time items that we propose for next year, most of that being enhancements in our cybersecurity strategy, continuation of graduation coaches, two graduation coaches and one research officer. There's a placeholder for upcoming retirement as a result of the new protected complement. Some of the proposed reductions on the previous slide can only be achieved when the retirement actually is received. So that is just a placeholder until such time that those retirements are announced. And the communication strategy and website redesign and hosting is, which will be the one-time implementation cost related to that project is also listed here. There are some additions to the budget and some of them have offsetting revenue, whether it's additional funding that was transferred or added to core education funding or additional support for student funds or SSF funding. So a portion of that is offset. The total net additions is 10 staffing and 873,000 and they're listed on this page. So you can see that most of those are additions that support student learning, structured reading, special education, math, program lead and program services, lead, social workers, specialized behavior support workers, and then an investment in cybersecurity and the communication strategy and website hosting and redesign. So those are the annual costs. Just a quick overview of staff. You will see where we're starting in the current year. There's the 94 reduction that's proposed for savings and there's the additions of 10 plus five that are for future retirements expected to be reduced later. So that's the 15 and changes as a result of enrollment decline or funding changes that have been eliminated. So overall, there's about 125 positions less year over year. Budget pressures that remain, the supply staffing costs remain a significant challenge for us. If we look back to pre-pandemic, the supply costs exceeded funding at that time just about 4 million and we're currently exceeding funding by over 10 million. So that is certainly putting a pressure on our ability to balance the budget and allocate our resources efficiently. The increase in statutory benefits, so the CPP and EI enhancement was federally mandated, an increase of 1% and is not being funded. So for us, now that it's fully implemented, that is a total increase on an annual basis of $6 million in our costs that has no offsetting revenue at all. We are struggling with the increases to facility costs, which are, the funding is not keeping up with the cost that we see in practice. Some of the costs have increased 10 to 30% in the last few years. And the portable allocation province-wide has not changed in over a decade, is just being reallocated and we've lost funding next year. Therefore, we are over that allocation by 1.6 million in terms of the costs. Special education and student wellbeing are enveloped together and we have aligned the envelope to bring in all the revenue that supports the student wellbeing as well that has been outside of the special education funding. And overall, that is still exceeding funding by 4.3 million. And the new transportation allocation I've mentioned, although there's an increase year over year, is still lower than under the old formula and we have a shortfall of 1.5 million. So this remains our biggest budget pressures for the coming year. And this is our overall financial position in terms of what other items we had to consider. Once we put all those in place, the original proposed reductions, the original elimination plan items, we still had 3.1 million to find. So we had to go back to the drawing board and we've listed here the additional reductions that we had to cut back in order to balance the budget with the 300,000 being increased, being added to the in-year deficit elimination plan and 2.8 million being taken out of the other non-salary budgets. And finally, this is how the financial position looks like that we will be providing to the ministry. And as you can see, the total accumulated in-year deficit for compliance for next year equals the in-year deficit elimination plan that was presented on the previous slide. And with that, we will turn it over for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see we do have some speakers. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you through you, Chair, to our presenters. So I know I was asked at the beginning, do you have any questions? And I said, sometimes they don't come up until you actually make the presentation. So trustee, or sorry Superintendent Nagoy, at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned the decreasing interest rates. So I know there's been a drop today and there is projected further drop in July. How will that impact our budget?
And thank you for that question. We have already taken into account, I believe, three or four points in terms of points of reduction. So we are looking at about a percentage lower in terms of our estimate and that brought down the investment income by 1.1 million. So that's already reflected in the number that you see today in your report.
Do you have a follow-up trustee Shuttleworth? Thank you. Our next speaker is trustee Baxter.
Thank you through the chair. I'd just like to say thank you for the work that you do and your patience in explaining school board finance to new trustees like me. I just wanted to ask about the efficiencies. So we've had a few presentations and opportunities to ask questions about the efficiencies that were found. Oh, thank you for bringing it up. And I know especially in the special education category, we had a lot of questions that Superintendent Riddick answered for us. And the impression that I walked away with was that we weren't really cutting services to students, but finding efficiencies in reducing programs that were undersubscribed and eliminating a program in particular that had been deemed no longer necessary by the work that's been done by special education staff. But there was a letter on Friday that came out from trustees to the public that I received as a parent actually before I saw it as a trustee, that was talking about cuts that could come to students in September, so in a few months. And I did hear some concerns about that from people who were asking me, well, why wasn't I talking about it? And so I thought it was a good time to, to ask you about those things. So as I said, my impression was that the items on this slide were by and large things that were changes that were made in the best interest of the programs and students. I know in, with literacy, there was some discussion around programs that have been resourced and no longer need to be, or movement of staff based on some changes that have been made, positive changes and, and good results that have come from our literacy programs. So I was just wondering if you could comment on the likelihood, because quite frankly, that's what I'm being asked by parents, that if the ministry doesn't come up with new money soon, will there be cuts to students other than, I realize that class sizes will increase in kindergarten and that the special education classes will, will increase a bit in size, but still be below the ministry guidelines? That's one question. And if I could ask one more, the letter from trustees linked to an article, I think it was, that talked about education funding not keeping pace with inflation. And given that the education funding for boards is primarily salaries, have salaries kept pace with inflation over the years? Or is that, is that a fair assumption? Because to be honest, I'm not quite sure, but I know you know. So thank you.
Thank you for those questions and for the chair. So with regards to your first question, in terms of impact to students, our approach has always been to minimize impact to students. So saying there is no impact to students, I don't think is a true statement. However, what we've tried to do is have as many efficiencies as we could as a growth board year over year and with additional funding. We've always had the ability and flexibility to have lower class sizes and more support to students. That was key and is key to student support and achievement and learning and growth. So as we're looking at the budget next year, of course, there's going to be 94 or less positions to support students and over $10 million. So there will be an impact to the system. However, we've, we've tried to do it in such a place that the same services and classes are offered and available to students, but some class sizes will be higher. So therefore, the teacher will be, you know, supporting more students than before. So that is absolutely true. And we've taken away some, some of the resources. The bigger concern that we have is that if there's no change, continues to be no changes, we fear that we've exhausted efficiencies. And the other portion of the budget that is supporting our program and is the fact that we do have some defer maintenance and other areas in the budget that we haven't been addressing and it doesn't look like we can get to address if the funding doesn't change. So there's some systemic issues that will continue to happen if funding doesn't, doesn't keep up with, with costs and will have an impact, a long-term impact on our ability to continue to support students in the same manner. So I don't know if that answers your first questions or if there's any, anyone else would want to add anything. But with regards to your second question, there are, the funding has certain gaps that we're, we're concerned on both sides. So 80% of our budget is staffing, so salary and benefits. So there's concerns with regards to that. And then the 20% is operating costs, which would be impacted by inflation. The 20% of operating costs impacted by inflation, the concern there, for example, is that the benchmarks for technology, learning resources, school supplies hasn't changed, you know, since before the pandemic, but looking back to 2009, there's been a couple of additions for 13%, but inflation has been 41%. So there's a big compression in our buying power to continue to maintain increasing enrollment since then and students and additional schools. And we hear it from our schools, we hear it from our staff, that we haven't really increased the budget to give them, afford them the ability to replace the same materials and supplies and resources and technology as they would have five years ago. So that's where the concern is there. There has not been an inflationary related increase to the school maintenance and repair. There have been a couple of additions for ventilation enhancements. The requirements haven't changed, but the funding was now removed. So the cost is still in the budget. So there, so, so there's, that's the, the pressure around the inflation. And then in terms of our 80% of the budget, although, you know, there's an increase in the salary based on centrally negotiated terms, the increase is going to be over an average salary. So depending on where on the grid your staff are based on seniority, if you have more towards, you know, the retirement age, for example, then your salaries will be heavier on, on the higher side, so above the funding benchmark. And the other two areas that I've mentioned are supply costs. So funding for supply costs is not keeping up with costs, with, with the budget and the enhancement for CPP and EI. So those alone are 16 million short on our salary side. So both sides do have some concerns and if this continues, next year, we might have to have another exercise of additional reductions.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Superintendent Taha.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And also building on the comments that Superintendent Nagoy had made, while there has been some adjustments to salaries through remedy, Bill 124 remedy award and also the recent award by arbitrator Kaplan. Generally speaking, those, those adjustments have not kept up with inflation. If you, if you're tracking inflation from, you know, 2014 on to now. Nonetheless, there has been those adjustments, but they have not kept up with inflation. And again, depending on where you are on the salary grid, where you are in your tenure, the impact can be a bit more adverse depending on where you were and where you are on the grid.
Thank you. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. We've talked through this in pretty extensive detail. There's one item that we haven't paid as much attention to because it wasn't pulled out here, but I believe library techs are, are a class that's affected by, by these changes. Is that correct? And I just wanted to speak, having talked about just about everything else, what's the impact of reducing the number of, of library techs that, that we have?
Thank you. So through the chair, through to trustee Bryden, if that's okay. So in regards to library techs and librarians, all of our librarians are still in each of our high schools. Library technicians, we produce by 0.5, which would be the projected plan. So we're rolling out for the upcoming year, having a couple of our schools in which there's a reduction. And the reason why there's a staggered process in managing that reduction is given some of parameters of our collective agreement. In terms of the overall impact, service to students, in terms of the operational actions of our librarians, as well as what the management of our librarians will be, we don't anticipate there would be a significant change or shift in terms of what that service would look like. Schools have the ability to ensure that there are staff that are trained and skilled and qualified to work on a full-time basis in each of our secondary school libraries. Our libraries technicians, of course, have a very significant role in managing the management of libraries, but in looking at the expected actions of workload that's entailed, we think that it can be well managed within the current complement.
Is there a follow-up?
Just to throw in that we overlook our librarians sometimes and, and they provide a valuable service in our schools.
Thank you. I echo that. Trustee Amos.
Thank you through you. I've been a trustee since 2000 and I've never seen this board in this position before. Like in the fact that we have a deficit of such a large number, we're having to cut 94 staff, which is part of why we are successful in this board by, because we've been able to do things better and differently. The fact that we're having to rob Peter to pay Paul, so the EI and CPP portion of the money that's supposed to go to staff has been mandated, but we do not get any funds to cover it. The fact that we have so many supply staff that we are, that we've had to use in the past that we are over, we are not supported for the number of, that we use. I mean, and the fact that they just did a transportation study and they made it worse for us. So our funding is even worse than it ever was. And we were the top-rated board for our consortium in the province. So I don't see how this is fair. It's not good for our students. It's not good for our staff. It's, it's put us in a really difficult position of having to pass a deficit budget that is, is not good for our students. I like to thank Superintendent Nagoy and General Manager Jay, sorry, whatever your last name, but and the whole department, because you and the senior admin team have had to make some difficult choices and you've listened to the community's input, you've listened to our input and, and none of us are happy about what's happening. And I just think that the government has to understand that they're not supporting us to the level that students need. And it's not just our board, it's all boards. But this board, if we could just get our EI CPP and our supply staff covered it would make such a huge difference. So we need the community, we need our board, we need everyone to be spreading the word that there is a concern around this budget and that we as trustees, we're thankful that it's being handled so well. And but it's not one that we're happy about.
I see no other speakers on the list. I just want to express my appreciation for the Fair Funding Committee. Three individuals on this board, trustee Brydon, Vice Chair Oliver, and trustee Amos, who is the chair of that committee, have worked tirelessly over the last few months with the help of Superintendent Nagoy, manager Francie, manager Basaglia, she's the manager, right? Yes, okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure I had the title right. I know that they all contributed in great part to the wonderful campaign that you've launched. And I'm very hopeful that we are gaining traction in the community and the awareness of the situation is really being driven home. And I sincerely appreciate the work that you've done, not just on behalf of our board, but province-wide. Because the problems that we are having are being felt across the province. So thank you very much for that. And thank you to you Superintendent Nagoy and your staff for the work that you've done on this budget. It's not a happy budget. We're not going to be celebrating this budget. But we appreciate all the work that you've put into making sure that it had the lowest impact possible on our students. Thank you. Next on our agenda is four point two point two Facility Services School Renewal Program, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, report two four zero seven five, submitted by Superintendent Godet.
Thank you and good evening. Along with the education funding, also comes our capital renewal and school condition improvement grant announcement. And as you can see in the report, it's on par with what has been provided last year. It's down a little bit, but there's different, I'll say, drivers of that. And part of that is the VFA facility condition audits that are done in our schools. There was a bit of a hiatus while the ministry, I think, re-tended the work. And I think we lagged about a year and a half of no inspections being done in our schools. But we are back on, we completed eight in May, we expect to do thirty-two before the end of the summer. And that will help inform then the backlog of needs that informs the grants that come through this and the business case that the Ministry of Education uses to fund this portfolio. There's no significant changes then in terms of the arrangement of how we're funding the various programs. I am excited to say that we vetted a process and a team that's going to come together for the first time in June, the Secondary Program Accommodation Committee. And also will start up the Elementary Program Accommodation Committee in September, in the fall. And that will look at strategic needs within our schools that we can help leverage the capital program dollars that we're spending here to help enhance the program within our school facilities. With that, I'm happy to take any questions. But maybe one more thing. You will also see Ontario Build signage that's going to go up at a lot of our schools in the near future as part of the ministry communication process. They would like us to provide signage to the community to inform where we're working on our schools and spending more than a quarter million dollars or have projects that are in excess of ninety days. So many of our schools will receive these signs within the near future.
Are there any questions for Superintendent Godet? And I will go to trustee Brydon.
Thank you. A pair of things. First, through the chair, the superintendent. The, I heard you say that the audits had lagged due to provincial process. What does that mean in terms of our understanding of our needs and our state of good repair for schools?
Thanks for the question. Through the chair to trustee Brydon. I think we still have a good understanding of our needs. There will be a lag in terms of the theoretical or mathematical components that add to our facility condition index from the ministry's auditors, the engineers and architects that actually do the assessments. So I'll say our FCI data was a little stagnant last year because we hadn't received any updates. So it lagged. So it's good to see that we're getting back into our schools because that will refresh the numbers. And, you know, if we do have deteriorating conditions, that will be highlighted and that should inform the funding down the road.
Thank you. And then my second question is actually probably more for the chair. In, we are approving as part of the budget and the preceding item, a capital budget. Is there any particular reason why we need to approve this subset of it? This is, this is part of the capital budget with a little tiny piece of operation thrown in, but it's all within the budget already. Why do we have a second motion that we need to approve?
We do this because it spells out where the expenditures will be made on what types of building assets the money will go to. It's just a way of communicating to the public how the money's being spent rather than just saying it's for capital, to let the public know exactly how we are improving schools.
I would love to see this, the kind of the core piece of this in appendix A, listed as a sub-report to the capital budget and simply have that be a single motion next year. If we wanted to do that, is there anything required from trustees or could staff simply bring it forward that way?
Staff can bring it forward that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Trustee Amos.
Thank you. And through you, thank you very much Superintendent Godet for this report. I'm very happy to hear that we are getting some of the funding that's needed for some of the repairs needed at schools. I have two concerns. One is with the index being behind, we know some of our schools are in really bad shape. Because we have schools from zero to a hundred, over a hundred years old. And there's no way there's comparison between some of those schools. So students aren't getting an equal education based on sometimes on their environment. So I know there's a priority list and I know you guys do a fantastic job making sure that the priorities go to the areas of need. So it is, does the funding look like it's fair based on what the needs for our board are? And my second part of the question is, with AODA compliance coming soon, is that another factor that will be coming? Because that would also affect the renewal for some schools because they need to have it for AODA compliance.
Thanks for the question. Through the chair. I'll start with the AODA compliance. That is a big challenge. And I'll say we are experiencing more unique challenges within our schools. And we're finding even where we've constructed, for example, what we call a universal washroom, we're having to go in and make modifications for individual needs due to certain conditions. So we are finding that that's been a bit of a pressure in terms of our accessibility requirements, that we've been more on a reactive front to students that are engaging with Halton District School Board and we're reacting to them when they join our board. At the same time, we do have a good plan that we're working through. But that's certainly something that has never been well-funded through the province and will continue to be a pressure. You know, significant amount of our school renewal does go towards accessibility and a significant amount of our renewal goes towards special education enhancements within our schools as well. In terms of the other aspects that you asked around the funding, we are experiencing increased costs, increased labor costs, supply costs. So certainly we can't do the same amount of work that we did with the funding that we received previously. So that's, that's the pressure. In terms of the audits that are done, when we receive a facility condition index, it identifies the needs within each school and assesses a value that we then need to report back on as we complete. So they use a database and we are obligated to work with finance to update that a few times a year to show how we're spending the money to drive down the facility condition index. So that is a requirement of the funding and it continues to work to reduce the FCI to make the school better.
Thank you. And I know in the past that the capital funding isn't as enveloped as other areas and that sometimes it's been borrowed from for other areas. Is this, is the new capital funding more specific or is it still or enveloped? Because I know that is part of why our buildings are in the condition they are because they've been borrowed from so that we can support students in other ways, which is, again, it's like robbing Peter to pay Paul, so.
Through the chair, from my perspective, the funding mechanisms and what we're allowed to spend our capital resources on has become more prescriptive and more restrictive. So our capital funding does indeed go to capital projects.
Thank you. And trustee Rocha.
Yes, through the chair. This question is more one of a governance question. So I'm very happy to support what trustee Brydon said earlier. Why, why are we approving this if it could be, we've already, we'll be approving it through the budget? So it makes more sense to do it as an appendix. The other question I have is, why is it listed as an item for future action? Because in our bylaws, this isn't one of the items that requires an appearance twice at the board. So, and I just, I just pulled up the bylaw just to make sure. I don't see it there. So unless I'm, unless it's classified under something else, we could potentially take care of this today.
Through the chair. So it was the preference of finance as well as facilities to come in tandem with the budget. So the report was ready for tonight's discussion. And so that's why it was included along with the draft budget so that you had all those details in advance for the approval of the budget next at the last board meeting.
Okay, so based on tonight's recommendations, in two weeks' time, will this be coming up for a separate vote or can it already be included as an appendix to the budget? I'm all for making things easier and.
Through the chair, if it's the will of trustees that you've received sufficient information, it could be treated as an information report. And then the approval of the capital budget at the June nineteenth meeting will be sufficient.
All right, so do we need to make a motion to that effect? Or can we just do a raise it? Like, how, how would you like to get the will of the board?
My preference for this year is for us to vote on both of these items next week, either separately or together, depending on how superintendents Godet and Nagoy choose to proceed. If they want to combine it and make this an appendix of the budget, I'm fine with that. And if they want to keep them separate, I'm fine with that. The fact is, this has come as an item for future decision. And I don't want to muddy the waters by removing it from decision. So let's, let's proceed and I will let the superintendents decide whether or not it will be one motion or two. And seeing no further questions on this item, thank you very much Superintendent Godet. We will see this item on June nineteenth. We are now up to section five point zero, Communication to the Board and Items for Information, five point one point one, Welcome Center two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Updates, Report two four zero eight three, submitted by Superintendent McIntosh. Superintendent McIntosh, would you like to speak to your report?
Good evening. Thank you. Through you, Chair Collard. Just some brief remarks regarding the report. So the enclosed report provides information for both newcomer and international student trends, data for the current two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year and forecast for two thousand and twenty-five. It also speaks to the wraparound approach from orientation to settlement support in schools, which is a key component to ensuring smooth integration into our schools. Of particular note, as we work to improve our service and support in this particular area, the voice of our students will give invaluable feedback about their experiences. And this data is, will be forthcoming from the Have Your Say surveys that are currently being completed by our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Superintendent McIntosh regarding this report? Trustee Brydon.
Thank you. Through the chair, we had some delightful governance training recently where one of our trainers suggested questions was, so what? In looking at the, at the report, what are the big takeaways that matter to trustees? There's an awful lot of information in there about what the Welcome Center does. But my, kind of my goals are looking at the pillars of the multi-year plan, at student well-being and achievements. And there is a piece in there that's about revenue and fiscal resources. But kind of looking through that lens, what's my takeaway from this report?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Collard, to trustee Brydon. I would say the biggest takeaways from the report are, one, that we're seeing an increased trend towards, with newcomer populations and growth in the region. And so an uptake within our schools and communities of newcomer populations in our schools. We can also expect to see a match of increased program support in the ESL area to support language onboarding of students who are arriving into the board. Additionally, as we continue to welcome newcomers into the board, it's going to require some additional resource supports in terms of supporting our students, not only with settlement in schools, but also in the ways that we onboard those folks into the school system in a timely and efficient manner to make sure that we can integrate them well and early into, into our schools in a dedicated and in a dedicated way. Those would be probably the biggest takeaways that I can offer you tonight.
Thank you. And in follow-up to your point about the Have Your Say survey, is that data disaggregated by newcomer status?
No, that, the Have Your Say survey data will not specifically speak to newcomers, but more so for our international students that are coming to the board. That was something in response to a question that came forward from trustees earlier on in the year. And so that was put into play as part of that existing structure.
Thank you.
Trustee Rocha.
Through the chair. You're directly behind me. Okay, so I noticed that Oakville has a radically high number of international students. So when I look at it from a trustee perspective, I see that there's a lot more accommodation pressures in Oakville to the point that we've had to close some programs in Oakville because of the influx. And I understand with international students, we do need homes that are vetted to allow for students to stay. So what are we doing as far as home state programs in other municipalities to encourage more international students to maybe think beyond Oakville? to encourage more international students to maybe think beyond Oakville? So that there's an even distribution of international students in our schools?
Thank you for the question. Through you, Chair Collard, to trustee Rocha. So the conversation around home stays is an ongoing one. And certainly, as you've identified, we often will see a number of our home stay partners having home stays available primarily in the Oakville area. But one of the ways that we're intentionally trying to shift that and diversify across the system is by exposing our home stay partners and the agents that support them by introducing them to different school sites across the region. And so this year, for example, we had an agent open house that was held at Elsie McGill. And so that allowed not only for us to talk specifically about what opportunities exist for our partners in different areas or municipalities in the board, but for them to also see and live and feel and experience that so they can understand how the demographic of the community is shifting and the opportunities that that can bring.
And trustee Zhang.
Thank you. Through chair to superintendent McIntosh. So I heard, I heard some feedback before. That's not, that's not something urgent we need to address immediately. So this is some story I heard more than a year ago. And so one community member asked me, they have some newcomers from the country and they speak the language. Not a lot of people speak here. And so because the Welcome Center needs to do a language assessment. And so those resources and translators, the resources are very limited in our school board. So in that situation, there's a community organization. They said they can help us find some translator. I'm not sure this, this works or not, because I know the teachers or our staff, they have, they are unionized. And so this situation, I'm not sure we can have another organization, community organization to help us. Thank you.
Through you, Chair Collard, trustee Zhang. Thank you for the question. I think that that, there's an opportunity whenever we have newcomers with a variety of language, languages that they speak and we need to provide service. Certainly partnering with a community organization that offers those services is an opportunity for us and something that we can absolutely explore.
Thank you, trustee Shadower.
Thank you through you, Chair, to superintendent McIntosh. So I'm coming back to Robbie's "so what" question. And I don't know if my question is for you or if it's for superintendent Nagoy, because one of the things that you said there was that with this influx of newcomers, one of the things we'll need to have is an increase in ESL supports. So when I look at our budget and the language supports, I don't know if it's the right piece, first, local circumstance allocation, it has dropped $850,000 from last year to this year. So I don't know who I'm asking this to. But if we have such an increased need or will be seeing an increased need, does our budget reflect that need?
And through the chair, thank you for the question, trustee Shadower. So the, the need will always vary year to year because you would have the students that are already in our system. So there's a four-year funding stream. The students may require additional support or less than four years. So in practice, that may differ. But the funding stream is over a four-year from the date of entry from an eligible country. What we have seen, however, is that there's been a bit of a, you know, that first year isn't as high as some of the other years. So that's why our funding has dropped a little bit for next year. That does not mean that we don't have a lot of newcomers that continue to come into the region. We have maintained our allocation of supports. And we also have addressed the, see the Ridge Milton 12 requirement as well. So we are monitoring it every year through the program department in terms of how those allocations are being given out and reassigned. So schools will get more or less, depending on where our newcomers are settling.
Do you have a follow-up?
I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm just, like, I don't, I don't, with what superintendent McIntosh said, that there's, the answer to your "so what" question was that there's going to be an increase. I just, I just wonder, how does that equate with a drop in funding of $850,000? And again, that might, I'm thinking, it says language support in local circumstances allocation. Is that the right place for me to be looking?
That certainly is, but it's not fully just for the language support. So that has a little bit more, there's funding for other local priorities as not just the language support.
Right, so I'm just, I'm, for me, and again, I'm just having a disconnect with the answer to the "so what" being an increased need and a reduction in funding. So I just, I'm struggling with that. So I just, I don't want to take time now, but I might need to ask some questions later. Thank you.
I think through the chair, we also need to consider that the Welcome Center and the services that it provides also gets federal funding. That's not a part of our budget. So there are additional monies that also supports that work.
So follow-up through the chair to the director. Why would that not be part of our budget?
It is not part of the core education funding that we were looking at. So the director is correct. There's an additional funding, which is the federal. So that's part of our federal funding through the IRCC. And that supports a lot of the staff in the Welcome Center. When the students are enrolled in our schools, they will then receive funding as a student of the board, as well as a top-up for language support.
And that funding, sorry, to follow-up, superintendent Nagoy, what you're speaking of is covered in the budget?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions for superintendent McIntosh. Thank you very much to superintendent McIntosh for presenting this report. The next item is 5.1.2, 2023-2024 Sustainability Report. Report number 24084 submitted by superintendents Godet and Flahatt. Superintendent Godet, would you like to speak to your report?
Thank you and good evening again. Excited to present our second annual report on sustainability and all the great work that goes on here in Halton. Out of the operational goals, you know, I'm very excited of the 35 bullet point items that we've listed there. Like, I was only involved in seven. There's so much going on that I don't know about that we need the support of the system to tell us and share with us. And we're making those connections from central staff with our schools and students and staff at our school sites to help build out our list of key performance indicators so that schools can leverage the learning amongst their own family of schools and other staff and students that are actually doing this great work. So I wanted to talk about the three pilot projects that we're showcasing. So specifically the photovoltaic projects. We completed Ethel Gardner and M. Robbins, or sorry, Angie MacArthur and Ethel Gardner recently, and those are powered up. It is interesting to note that I think within our first month, we got about a $4,000 credit received, a $4,000 worth of energy that we produce that offsets our utility bills, which is pretty great. But it's also a 15-year payback, which is still quite a while. We do find that some of our just regular renewal work, replacing roofs and increasing insulation, replacing windows, double-pane windows, and completing building fenestration generally provides better return on investment. So these are great and would love to continue to do them. But at this point, the funding model is not going to be supported out of the operating budget. And we're not going to support it out of our capital renewal right now, which would likely be the next place we would look for. So we do believe that we've delivered upon the original report that came to board a few years ago for installation of solar arrays in Halton District. There was one school, and the name is escaping me, that we didn't do. And part of that was restrictions from the local distributor. We couldn't connect to the grid. That provided some technical challenges. Also very excited to share the Miyawaki Forest, the first one that we did at Pine View. It's been a great success. And building on that, Craig Kielberger, we attended the second planting and very engaged with the school community, the staff, the students. And some retirees were back to help plant trees, which was awesome to see them. The one up at Pine View, there is a picture of a bird, and that's a killdeer bird. So in speaking with principal Roy, apparently the bird has nested and creating a whole new ecosystem up there. And the really exciting part is that the students are learning about the habitats and they're going to build that into the school curriculum. So incorporating mini forests and ecosystems into outdoor learning, which is just a fantastic outcome. And then lastly, the one that I would like to highlight is just working in partnership with superintendent Flahatt and then some of the many great partners we have to Credit Valley Conservation to do rain garden. So providing these rain gardens certainly helps promote more infiltration into the ground, more capacity, helps to clean the water that ends up into our aquifer and also helps minimize the storm surge that sometimes overtakes some of our systems. So great, great examples and great opportunities to learn from. Pilot at certain sites and then scale them up. Use them as learning, learning projects to see what we do right and what we can do better, and then apply that at the next site. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And I don't know if Aiman Superintendent Flahatt's online and needs to add anything.
Trustee Rocha.
Through you, Chair. So I have to say, this was my favorite report in the board package, only because it just made me smile. Like, every paragraph, every accomplishment, I was doing a happy dance. And it was written in a way that I could see all of the commitments in the multi-year plan tied into it. So first off, congratulations to you and to your team on the great work that's been done, the great work that's going to continue to pay back over the 15 years. So I just want to, I'm just so happy. I'm really, really happy. And speaking of happy, we always release media statements to say, hey, here is something good we did. Are there any plans to release anything to the media to showcase the great work with respect to our environmental leadership and everything that's been done? I'll let you have a think on that. But I did have a question, and that is, what can we attribute, so some of the, a lot of, some of the programs that were mentioned in here, they're very school-driven, like EgoSchools certification and whatnot. What, do you know what's the biggest factor in a school being successful? Is it buy-in from the principal and the administration team? Is it having a staff member who's got a love for the environment and is really excited to do everything they can for the environment? I don't know. What do you think are the biggest factors in a school's success?
Thanks for the question. Through the chair, I do think, obviously, our staff are a huge factor to contributing to the great success. But, you know, that builds on the passion of the students as well. And, you know, we need to empower them and provide them the tools. And so that's one of my hopes. We had some great connections with Student Senate and the Environmental Subcommittee, speaking to students and trying to find, you know, how can we leverage and make things easier for students and staff to actually implement these changes on their site? So, you know, from my perspective, it's empowering them. It is the staff that need to support and help facilitate this and where we can provide resources. So that's, I think, the context that we're building in the background is trying to provide similar resources for the entire district. What I have found and seen is that every school builds their own initiatives from the grassroots and works it up. And that can be very difficult to navigate. And so if we can provide something centrally to say, here, here's your starter kit to plant butterfly, way, station, garden. And here's some signage that, you know, then people don't need to go out and specifically figure out what kind of signage we need and what approvals are required. So if we can provide toolkits centrally, and then students and staff can use this report to say, hey, I'd like to do this, because we haven't done it, but my neighboring school has. And I can learn from them as opposed to one person here at the central office, which was what had traditionally gone on. We're building capacity of the system and becoming a greater learning environment. So that's the intent of this report. And so, you know, I'm not in a school, so this is what I think, but I don't have any proof of that. Sorry, and then in terms of communications, certainly, we work with manager Francie and her team. Look for opportunities to retweet and build on other partners that are communicating. But perhaps I'll turn it over to Heather to comment.
Sure. Through the chair to trustee Rocha. Yes, many of the, of the examples that superintendent Godet listed, we have shared as Spotlight on School Stories and Highlight through our Director's Cut series to highlight the environmental leadership area focus of the multi-year plan. But we can certainly look to continue to create exposure to ensure that these stories are highlighted and hopefully receive further media coverage as well.
Thank you, trustee Bryden.
Thank you. I like this report for another reason. You've got a lovely set of KPIs. And they're provided at school level and rolled up and given nice percentages and targets. So the data nerd in me loves this. There's a number of them for which data is yet to be collected. And I wanted to ask about plans for collecting that. Did we bite off more than we could chew in what we tried to measure? Or do we intend to try and gather data in all of this? And my particular interest is in the active transportation side of things.
Thanks for the question. Yeah, as an engineer, I love data as well. And so I think a fair bit of this is draft because we do need to verify it. Also, things change annually. I know we had a great butterfly garden that unfortunately got cut down with a new contractor and lack of signage. So these are some of the problems we're trying to solve while we verify the data. So I think, you know, Director Ennis had a challenge to the Environmental Leadership Committee and our senior team to, let's point out who is working towards the environmental initiatives at these school sites so that we can connect with them. And with that, we're starting to see the data come back. And it's informing the KPI list as well. You know, I thought, hey, there's two or three gardens that we could, and there's probably five or six different types of gardens that our students are telling us that they're building at their schools. So that list, I hope, will grow and will verify the content in the coming years. I've left a draft where I can't say that we've actually quantified it properly. We do know certain school sites, but we need greater collaboration. But that's coming and you're starting to see that. And then, yeah, setting the targets, I think that's some of the work that we'll see done at the Environmental Leadership and Sustainability Committee around where do we want to be. And, you know, not everything can be 100% like solar. We couldn't possibly connect every school with a solar array into the grid because technically it's not feasible. So, you know, are we there? Is that it? Or should we set higher targets? That's yet to be determined.
And trustee Shadower.
You just get all nice questions tonight. So again, I like it too. If I want to talk about why I like it, I love the pictures. But you were speaking about the solar grids and you, all the pictures are of the solar panels on the tops of schools. Have you thought of any other alternative energy solutions for schools, particularly with the new schools that we're building? So when we're looking at the new schools that are coming up, are we looking at what are alternative sources of energy for these schools? For, I know, for example, in Brock, there's where the Canada Games were held, they have a green roof so that it grows stuff and it heats the building through that. So I'm just wondering, solar might, you said we can't do solar all the way. So are there other options that you are looking into?
Yeah, certainly. Through the Chair to Trustees, I think that was an initiative by the province a number of years ago to actually explore this explicitly. And I remember developing business cases for wind, for example, that weren't wildly successful at all. So there are a bunch of different options. I will say, new schools are probably not going to be our focus, just because of the constraints that we have already with budget and funding restrictions and tight timelines. We've got a wealth of inventory that we can create pilots and try. So to your point, things like green roofs and, you know, a site that doesn't have a lot of green space or forest makes a lot of sense to me. They are expensive, so we want to make sure that we do them right. And if we can leverage them as learning opportunities for students and make them accessible, that's even better. So, yeah, we continue to explore that. I think one of our areas of focus right now is a lot of our schools have heat pumps, which is really something that can kind of adjust, and we can rely on more electrical power in the future, should we choose to get less reliant on natural gas.
Thank you very much. All the kudos to you for your report. I know Superintendent Flahatt as well. The green in me is smiling from ear to ear. So thank you very much for this report, and we look forward to future reports of even greener news. Thank you very much. Now we move on to 5.2, the Director's Report, and I will hand it over to him.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard, and good evening, everyone. This evening, I just want to highlight for you that we continue to focus on the priorities in our multi-year plan. We have the Learning and Achievement, of course, Math Symposium that was held at Garth Webb. We have our teachers who are dedicated and who take time out of their weekends to show up on to learn, so that we can provide great instructions for our students, so that we can meet the mandate of the ministry who asks us to support math. And so we're excited that on a weekend, teachers show up to learn, to improve instruction for our students. And this contributes to the great work and excellence that we see across our board. By now, all of you would have seen the Director's Cut on the environmental leadership. I mean, we didn't get as many compliments as Ian, but, I mean, I mean, it's not a competition, Ian. We're working in concert. But this was a wonderful, wonderful video. And so thanks to everyone involved that once again highlighted our commitment and our key priority in environmental leadership. You were all present, and thank you so much for the great show of support to students and family at our Students Celebration of Student Excellence. What a great event to highlight the successes that we have within the Alton District School Board. So many wonderful stories I heard from many, many families and students. And so thank you to all of you for the great support that night. The school programs, we have the Pathways Event at Sheridan College. We have this planned. I know Trustee Rocha will be very much interested in this. So the Pathway Event is going to be October the 24th, 23rd and 24th, expecting about 4,000 students. Nick, were you able to increase the capacity?
Well, we, I think we're quite happy at 4,000 participants and focusing in on our elevens and twelves.
Okay, wonderful. We have our Second Annual Support Tournament in support of National Accessibility Week at Hayden. We hosted six schools. And so this was a great opportunity to bring about inclusion for those who need to showcase their talent and their skills through accessibility means. The H double S double A had their cricket sponsorship, and many of you don't know that there's great cricket tournaments going on across in the world right now. Many countries are involved in this. And so it's great to see the sport growing in HDSP. We have students from many countries that love cricket as a sport. We had Forge FC, of course, had over 3,500 HDSP students from 30 schools. It was a huge success. And so we thank all of the organizers and participants for providing our students with this great opportunity. Our Ontario Skills Competition, excellent results. We won two gold, four silvers, two bronze medal at this event. So congratulations to our students for the great show. I was there and I saw it, a massive event. If you've not had the opportunity to witness it, please take some time in future years to see it, because it's very, very impressive. And congratulations to all our winners from the HDSP. Also, would like to congratulate our teams that traveled to Texas for the world's first robotics competition. Strong showing, of course, from Garth Webb. Garth Webb and MMR and MMR Robotics won their field in the preliminary. So congratulations to MMR for a great showing in the robotics, and to Garth Webb for always representing the HDSP so well each and every year. And with that, I conclude my Director's Report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Trustee Rocha.
I wanted to share additional great news, seeing as how Director Ennis was sharing so much good news. I thought I would share some really great news about two high schools in Oakville. And that is Oakville-Trefalgar High School and Iroquois Ridge High School, which they both held Relay for Life on May 24th, I believe. And OT always hits it out of the ballpark. They raised over $200,000, which is incredible. And Iroquois Ridge, I don't have their final numbers, but I think last I checked, it was over $80,000. So just want to give a shout out to both those high schools on incredible accomplishment.
Amazing. Amazing results.
Trustee Alonzenov.
And actually, to add on to Trustee Rocha's point about Relay for Life, Abbey Park High School actually also had the opportunity to host an event this year. I believe it was on the 20, so Wednesday, I believe it was the 25th, and they raised over $50,000 as well. So definitely a great initiative to give to our students.
Only $50,000?
So I don't see anyone else on the speakers list, but I also have a question for the Director. I was hoping he could let us know the steps that have been taken to date regarding the recent incident at Burlington Central High School.
Thank you for the question, Chair Collard. I know that this incident at Burlington Central has gained and garnered lots of attention. First, let me say that on behalf of the entire senior team, and I know the Board of Trustees joined me, in strongly condemning antisemitism in all its forms. We do not support it. We are firmly against it, and we continuously do a lot of work to combat it. So let me say that unequivocally and clearly, that we are in a space that we always, always condemn any form of hate and discrimination. And antisemitism, it has no place in the HDSP, and we will continue to do the work to eliminate it. I just wanted to take this opportunity to give you some broader context of some of the work that we have been doing, because I do realize that while there is a focus on the school, that the board as a whole, we continue to do great work. And so through our student, for student learning, we've had workshops on Tour of Humanity through the Simon Wiesenthal Center. The new social studies curriculum and implementation means that all our Grade Six students have direct learning on the historical and present-day contributions of Jewish Canadians, Holocaust education and antisemitism. The new resource, both in English and French, was added to every school library, The Long Road to Justice, The Story of Simon Wiesenthal. We also took the opportunity, and we've had learning on preventing, recognizing, and addressing antisemitism, supporting HDSP educators facing history and ourselves. This was done just last month. We offered workshops to one staff from every school in our board, and we also additionally offered it open to every staff within our board. We're also promoting this experience of facing history and ourselves, preventing, recognizing, and addressing antisemitism over the summer. So we're expanding this opportunity, not just this school year, in the school year, but into the summer as well. We've had shared anti-racism teaching resources with all of our equity advocates. And we're building the capacity of our Equity Department and members of our Equity Department attending full-day professional learning on antisemitism. In the fall coming up, so this is continuous work. We're going to be having Part Two of Facing History and Ourselves, Preventing, Recognizing, and Addressing Antisemitism. We've had workshops on harmful language and discriminatory and harmful language protocols, which with a discussion on noticing and addressing antisemitism. Our April PD Day for elementary educators on implementing the new curriculum expectations on affirming Jewish identity, the Holocaust and human rights, including online educator resources. We are providing new resources, The Long Road to Justice, for every school. On administrative learning, and many, most of this is optional, but we continue to provide this opportunity to our administrators, sharing opportunities such as the Identify, Address, and Dismantle Antisemitism in Educational Settings, offered by the Ontario Principals Council, Challenging the Norms: Antisemitism in Education Today, including experts such as Pat Case and Dr. Karen Mock. Presentation by Dr. Karen Mock on From Multiculturalism to Anti-Racism to Equity. And many of you would know that Dr. Karen Mock is someone that I've brought to the board through the Director's Series to do work around antisemitism. And what is and is not antisemitism, that is work that we are doing through the, you know, Human Rights, you know, Committee. The trustees and senior staff of this board know that we have done work here, right in this room, all of us sitting here, on antisemitism. You know, there's been a lot of community engagement. You know, I've had many meetings with members of the Jewish community, and multiple times this year, and not just entire, you know, community engagement, but sometimes I've taken the opportunity to speak directly with the leaders of those groups, to get to seek their consult on different items and different ideas. You've seen a lot of work that we have done, starting from two years ago, where I started the work on the longest hatred through the Director's Panel, antisemitism. You know, this year, we focused on trying to build bridges through the Director's Panel Series. Talk It Out was just this week. The previous one was on building bridges in a polarized world. We are affirming the identity of our Jewish students through, you know, Jewish Heritage Month. And I know I heard from some parents who say things were not happening in some schools. And I followed up with those schools to find out that things did happen. But clearly, we are not doing a good job of celebrating and letting others know what is happening in our schools. And so, you know, we've brought in Holocaust survivors to meet and speak with students. You know, we have provided access to our Jewish texts featuring Jewish narratives in our libraries. And so there's been a lot of work that has gone on to support the work around antisemitism. I am confident in the work that we have done, and I am humbled by the fact that we need to do more. And so that is something that we are committed to. The incident that happened at Burlington Central is something that we take very seriously. And, you know, we apologize over and over again, but we believe, and I believe fairly, that we must learn our way into a better future. And so that learning means that we're providing learning for every level of this organization on antisemitism. And we're not going to shy away from that work. We have started that work before this year. We started this work before October 7, and we're going to continue this work this year, next year, and years to come. Because as all of us in this room know, that this work is not about, there is no vaccine that we can provide that will inoculate us against hate and racism. It is work that we must continue to do. It is difficult work, and it is hard work. But we're committed to that. And that is the hallmark of this board. We have done that work right across the spectrum. And the work that we do around antisemitism is no different. And so we have, as I've outlined for you, have done a lot of work, including work that I know has been done at Burlington Central. So, you know, we are, we're not shying away from the work. And I know that Superintendent Rodek is working with the staff there to make sure that we are addressing the issue head-on and dealing with it in a matter that will hopefully resolve itself, you know, you know, in a way that families and students will all feel that they belong in our schools. We're not happy that our students, all our students are not in school. We're not happy about that. And so we want to make sure that we're providing safe space for all students, Jewish students, Muslim students, Black students, gay students, every student, white student, doesn't matter what your identity is, there's a space for you in the Alton District School Board, and that is simply our message.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Director Ennis? Trustee Shuttleworth.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Director Ennis, thank you so much for that very detailed overview of all the different programs that are in place and all the different projects that you are doing and the learning that is going on within our school board. And I, when I think in more general terms, I think in terms of, and you mentioned it, Director Ennis, the idea of hate. How are we combating hate generally and broadly? So thinking about the idea that although there are different targets of this hate, what are we doing in general? I want to say to promote kindness, but to make those feelings less, I don't know how to say this, less volatile, less divisive, less, as you said, polarizing, because really right now, and this is something I think I've spoken to people about here, and I've spoken about it with other colleagues, nobody's friends anymore. Like, we can't have different opinions without, like, in the past, I might be a conservative, Shin Yi might be a liberal, but that was okay. We could still be friends. But we've kind of lost our way in that. So I'm just trying to find out if there has been any discussion or ideas or problem-solving thinking ideas as to how we can try to get back to those old values. That it's okay to be from Palestine, and it's okay to be from Israel or to be Jewish, and you can still be friends. So it's more rather than, and I know we have to focus on antisemitism and anti-Black racism and transphobia and all those different things, but how can we get to the core root of the problem? How can we try to dismantle, and it's broader than just our school board, that hate that is taking over our community? It's a big question. I don't know if you'll have the answer. Thank you.
No, thank you for the question. I really appreciate it, Trustee Shuttleworth. I'm going to ask our Human Rights and Equity Advisor, Parvi Bhagra, to maybe speak to some of what you're talking about, because I think the conversations that we had in our latest Director's Panel Series speak directly to that very point that you're making.
Sure. Thank you, Director Ennis, and through you, Chair, and vice chair to Trustee Shuttleworth. It's a collective responsibility. And I think some of the critical discussions that we're engaging in as part of the Director's Panel Series, and anybody that hasn't had a chance, and it's available publicly, and they're in a public forum available for students, staff, and community here at Alton District School Board, talking about building bridges in a polarizing world. And so part of that is starting with conversation and having individuals come and speak and engage and discuss and share thoughts and insights. We've had a strong relationship with the Interface Council, and they have shared some strong programming that they've been involved in with some of our schools and are looking to come back and build that back up. And one of the things, for example, when you're talking about, it's about bringing people together as a start. And so as much as, and I use this in quotes, as the concept of a walkout, you know, they're considering concepts like a walk-in, talk-in, let's sit, let's engage, because dialogue is really the next form. And that requires partnership all around, and it also requires a continuation of engaging our staff to have dialogue, because we've also heard from students that they want dialogue. And that dialogue that needs to happen is about capacity building also with our staff throughout the system. And then there's systemic pieces that we can help support and bring in resources and ourselves be available out to the system. and bring in resources and ourselves be available out to the system to be able to engage. And in fact, somewhat of the settlements that you have spoken to right now were actually conversations that were discussed as part of the Director's Panel series with our Interfaith Council piece, where we want to go back to some of those, what they have called the golden rules and other concepts to bring people to have an understanding, to be able to have as a starting point dialogue. And so, we're going to continue this theme, similar to what Director Ennis was saying, generally in terms of some very specifics that we've been doing last year, including this year and going forward. And we really want to move it to that place of people coming together and having dialogue. And in fact, one of the resources I was just sharing out with both the Director and our Associate Director was Center for Dialogue at Simon Fraser University and looking at that as a concept to see how we can implement some of those key components into our curriculum and build capacity in staff to move us towards a better place of having conversation and dialogue instead of being, for lack of a better word, on polarizing spaces, which don't allow us to be in community space. So, thanks for bringing up your thoughts and reflections.
Yeah, thank you. And just a quick follow-up. And I just hearken back to our delegate at the beginning, when he was talking about the idea that once we get to post-secondary school, we want to be teaching our students now and catching them now to try and get them to recognize that it's about coming together rather than being divided. So, thank you.
And if I just quickly may, just for those who may not know, that the Interfaith Council of Halton, you know, we thought about bringing them specifically, to your point, Chair Shuttleworth, because they, I've done it again. Trustee Shuttleworth, it's in my brain, sorry. Because they represent a vast array of diversity, religious diversity and cultural diversity. There were Jewish people represented, there are Christians united, there are Baha'i, there are Muslims. And so, you know, they found a way to come together even when they may not all agree on a particular thing. But they found a way to stay united and to show empathy and caring and kindness that you spoke about towards each other. Knowing that we are first and foremost, we have a relationship, and our disagreements should not, you know, sever that relationship. We're going to still care for each other even when we disagree, because we truly have an affection for each other. And so, that's what we want to replicate in our schools, where our kids care for each other. So, even if we disagree, the disagreement is not taken out on each other. We can be tough on the issues, as you know Chair Collard likes to say, but we are kind to the people. And so, we want our kids to be kind to each other, and regardless of how you feel about a particular issue, not take out your disagreement or your feelings or your hurt on each other.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think that, again, as you said, starts with us, that we have to model that. I think, I'm hoping that we're doing quite a good job of that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Director Ennis. So, I believe you share a lot of your opinion, and so, I understand that this conquering the hate is a long-term, ongoing effort for everyone here. And so, for this case, I know our board released a joint statement. The joint statement identified incidents include, involved antisemitism and anti-Palestinian racism, so these two elements. So, in our real, in the real-world practice, in the operation practice, I'm wondering how can, how do we identify these two different kinds of racism or this hate? The reason is, I'm using my, I think, those concepts in an engineer way. So, I'm a technical people, so always, if I get any concept, always want to find what is what. And so, if, because a lot of people, people and people are different. Some people are more sensitive, and they can consider a lot of people, a lot of things, the words are, they feel is harmful, and they consider they are offended or this is some emotion issue. But some people are less sensitive, and they consider it doesn't matter what they say. So, we cannot just use a result to determine what the behavior is. We need to see, have a standard, so make all the standards consistent. Because this is something we find in the real school operation. We need the staff, the students, all our community members to understand what it is. So, we learn that from the real case. So, if we can share with a clear standard, so in the future, I'm not saying to punish someone for this is the operation, but I'm just thinking for everyone in the community, we need to know what is the behavior we should prevent from happening in the future. Thank you.
And Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the Chair, to Director Ennis. It seems like we've been talking about the potential for antisemitism and hate in our schools since October. And then we moved into talking about the actual hate and antisemitism in our schools. So, it's a big relief to hear that there is some training now being offered to staff, although it's so late in the year. I'm just wondering, is there any consideration of antisemitism training for staff that would be more mandatory, so not requiring that staff voluntarily take their own time to view these programs, but something that would be offered during staff meetings or on PD days, when all staff could receive that training? That's the first question. And then the second question is, has there been any consideration of issuing any directives around political activism by staff in our schools? So, sort of following up on Trustee Shuttleworth's point is that, you know, we really ideally and based on our NYPD would like our schools to be places where everyone coexists. And so, has there been any thought about working on staff? Sort of political, expressions of political positions on the conflict in the Middle East to hopefully encourage students to also, you know, keep the political opinions and hates and that kind of thing outside of the school? And once you move into the building, have that be sort of, you know, the safe space where we try to all get along? Thank you.
So, thank you for the question, Trustee Baxter. Certainly to your first question around, you know, mandatory. We have provided, you know, this learning, for example, the addressing antisemitism that we provided. We insisted that every school be represented in our board. That was something that we also provided, release time for staff to do. So, to your point, it's not just a mandatory, a voluntary, sorry, a voluntary opportunity, but one that we provide release time for staff to show up to these. And, you know, certainly as we move into the fall, you know, we are certainly going to be expanding that opportunity and giving staff, you know, more and more opportunities. You know, we have not really taken a sort of mandatory approach to the work around hate and discrimination. You know, we've provided opportunities that a lot of people have taken advantage of. But in the case of the latest work that we did around antisemitism, we insisted that all schools be represented. And so, you know, I think that's a next step for us in terms of all staff. But we're not there yet, but we certainly are open to exploring how we can get there. In terms of staff and their activism, I would say that I would, you know, I would ask that staff have a eye to focus on the curriculum. You know, that's, you know, when students walk through the door at school, the staff focus on teaching the Ontario curriculum. That is the expectation of the Ontario government, and that's the expectation that we have. And so, you know, unless it is context related to a political study in a class, we would ask that, you know, activism, you know, not be showcased in schools, but that staff really take an opportunity to support the curriculum. That would be our goal. So, I don't know if anyone else want to add to that thought?
I'm sorry? Yeah. Trustee Sherbellen.
Thank you, Chair Collard. And just in light of the conversations that we're having around surrounding conflicts in the Middle East, Islamophobia, antisemitism, I've heard from a lot of students as we especially approach major events like cultural celebrations in schools and graduation ceremonies regarding kind of use of flags and keffiyehs in those types of celebration. I was wondering if Director Ennis or any of the staff could kind of bring some clarification to the use of flags and keffiyehs during graduation students? I know some of my peers are in fear of any disturbances to that and if there is a place for that in the graduation ceremonies. Thank you.
I would say, Trustee Sherbellen, that students need to remember that our graduations and our commencements are a place where everyone needs to feel that they belong. And so, you know, I would ask that people not bring flags or any kind of cultural significance that might cause anyone to feel that they don't belong. I think that we need to create a space where it's going to be a joyous occasion. I've had the opportunity to be at two commencements already this year, and it was a place that everyone felt included. I would say, let's keep the flags and the insignias out of the commencements.
Thanks so much.
And Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. Director Ennis, you spoke to the Discriminatory and Harmful Language Protocol, which I pulled up and took a look at. And it's got a lovely procedure for laying out how staff should react to discriminatory and harmful language. But it doesn't actually include a definition of what constitutes discriminatory and harmful language. And I think we have often struggled in this space of the same thing being heard in different ways by different people. And I'm wondering what procedures we have in place to take a statement or a symbol and ask? How do we, do we find that acceptable? Do we find that not acceptable? Sorry, please repeat that for me. What procedures do we have in place to assess a portion of speech or a symbol or something that has become a point of contention? And ask, do we find this acceptable or not acceptable?
I think most, I think most of us, you know, through our work in equity and inclusion, through our work as professionals, understand hate. I think most of us understand hate in all its forms. I would venture to say that the work of learning our way into this better future is part of that journey. So, that's why we bring experts in to help us understand what that is. That's why we did that learning here together, to try and understand and get us better and closer to what that means. Because, you know, with 10,000 to 12,000 employees, one could certainly imagine that there might be different interpretations and ways of understanding. Even with this small group in the learning that we had, I'm sure there are people who walk away with different interpretations and views. But it's, it is a learning a way into, you know, that understanding. It is not, and so, it's incumbent on us to ask the people who know and bring those people in to help us get closer to that. But I think most of us recognize, I would say, some of the, you know, most common forms of hate. I think most of us can recognize, we know it when we see it and when we hear it.
I mean, my initial premise there was that we can't have a statement that one person deems hateful and another person deems not hateful. And how do we resolve that tension? What process do we have in place for resolving that?
We don't have a process to resolve that right now. I think that that's part of the challenge that we are going through. That's part of the learning our way through this, because there are different interpretations of different things. But that is a learning, it requires learning on all of our parts to gain a fuller understanding that would help us to see, let me listen to you and your point of view, and will you kindly listen to me and my point of view? And hopefully, together, we can come to some consensus and understanding. That's my hope. That is more challenging than one, than how I've just framed it. And that is part of our challenge. Trustee Bryden.
Trustee Amin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Trustee Bryden raised a very good question, that how do we recognize what is hateful? And also, like, comments that are hateful for one person, maybe like one group or one person may not be the hateful, or maybe not the, may not be coming out of hate. So, how do we recognize that? So, first thing is, I think in a democracy, we should have open dialogue. We should not try to suppress people's voices. That's to start with. So, I'll just give an example. When these student walkouts and protests started, our immediate reaction was to take them out of the school. And we sent them on the public property, out of the school, and we lost all control. Suppose these protests were overseen by the schools, inside the school, you would be having complete control about what slogans are being said, what banners are being carried. Maybe they were, we could have worked out like half an hour or 45 minutes. Okay, you can go shout, these are the slogans that you're allowed to shout. These are the things you should not say, and come back and report everything. So, maybe that approach could have been adopted, but that ship has sailed now. Anytime we try to suppress voices, suppress opinions, try to stop people from expressing their opinions, it's not going to end up good. So, if we have to understand, if we want to understand what is hateful and what is not, let people speak. Let them, let's have a dialogue.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Trustee Amin. I mean, certainly, I don't see a place or a space in our schools for these types of things. I do not believe that we have a, you know, a way of doing this in a way that won't be harmful and hurtful to others. And this is why we have asked these be off our school property. I mean, that is a decision that I think is one that is sound, that, you know, provides good support for students so that learning can continue, so that those who don't want to be a part of a protest, you know, can continue on their learning journey. But I don't see a space within our schools for this. And I would, I would, I would ask that, you know, students, you know, as I've asked many times before, that they, I would much prefer, and I would ask strongly, that they would take their protest outside of school, outside of school hours, and, you know, and so that we don't disrupt learning within, for themselves and/or for others.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Trustee Zhang.
Thank you. So, actually, the question I asked is the same as Trustee Bryden said. So, we have the same question. So, if we haven't had a very clear definition, it's a time to do a research, and everyone just to share, do some homework, and we share our opinion and have the definition made clear to all our community members. So, that will be benefit to everyone. And so, I want to give an example. Like, six, seven years ago, there was a school board in Ontario, list, provide a list of behavior, consider those behavior are hate. One of the behavior is dislike. So, because this is, makes it very controversial. So because this is makes it very controversial. So people can, that means people cannot, don't like, some people don't like it, it considers it hate. And that will be, so that's why we need to share what we can, what we think, what behavior are acceptable, not what are not acceptable, make it very clear to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, final go. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through the chair to Director Ennis. I wasn't planning on asking this question, but now I'm following. I just wanted to confirm, given that we are a provincial entity, we are following the IRA definition of antisemitism, I assume? That is what the board has held to? The question of how our staff train to actually interpret that is a whole other one that I'm guessing we're not going to get an answer, but I just wanted to confirm it is the IRA definition that the board uses to define antisemitism?
I'm going to defer to the Human Rights Equity Advisor.
No, the board has not adopted the IRA definition of antisemitism. Coming back to some of the comments that are happening here in terms of what's being asked of what defines that definition piece itself, because even technically defining something does not guarantee until some of these pieces actually go further than even us as a school board. So for example, right now, hate crimes is a criminal offense. So when we use the word hateful, it's different than what the police will define. And so it's also within the powers and legislation that exist. In fact, what was being shared right now in terms of, do we have, in fact, we have extensive, extensive legislation to define, and as Director Ennis has been saying, that process that you go through, you look through legal precedent, you look at the Ontario Human Rights Code, you look at the Canadian Human Rights Code, you look at Supreme Court of Canada decisions, and then you balance those pieces within other aspects of freedom of expression, and then you balance that within what was said. And it's not clear cut. We wish. It was simple as you have a definition, you apply it, and it just works. It's very nuanced, and so we continue to engage when, and things evolve. Language evolves, symbols evolve, and so those are also aspects that we are always assessing, reassessing. I think we can appreciate not only on some of the issues that are being brought forth today, but when you're looking at other issues of diversity, equity, inclusion, and human rights, and looking at language and other demographic groups, even language around 2SLGBTQ that continues to evolve. And so these are pieces that we look far and wide, deep, high and low, to do the best in the circumstances at this current time to be able to apply. And then we have our own protocols within the system, and then a lot of governing bodies and associations have those pieces as well in terms of respectful workplaces and languages, discriminatory, harassment. Then there's layers within those concepts as well. So there's lots of tools that we engage in, but the tools in themselves are only as good as the person that can apply those tools to be able to start assessing. And so those assessments will always continue for us as a board in terms of when we're engaging in something. Because then the other aspect as well is when you do, and you do apply, and if there are consequences, right, then those have to be then tested against, what did you apply to create that consequence? And so those are also aspects we have to consider as well, because you don't just apply something and declare it as something, because that can also put you in legal liability equally, just as much as not doing. So doing and not doing can both be there. And in example, for example, right now, I'm not sure if people are familiar with, for example, within the University of Toronto Student Protest, that the police have said, even by definition of being unlawful, they cannot just use arbitrarily use a trespassing clause to disrupt a protest. Because on the other hand, even as we had learned as part of a multi-year plan piece that were guided by the Human Rights Code, and so the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedom says peaceful assembly. And just like it's been stated that in collective agreements, you can't contract out human rights. So if there's something in a collective agreement that goes against human rights principles, it can't just be contracted out. Equally, you can't just arbitrarily apply laws, for example trespassing, to deny somebody a charter right for which they are peacefully protesting, if that's the framework. And so this is how layered and nuanced each one of these pieces are, because on the surface, it may seem pragmatic. People are asking the police, hey, University of Toronto says it's unlawful and it's trespassing notices we want. Because they do do a lot of trespassing notices all year. We do it as a school system. But then you have to apply charter and other layers to these decisions to see if making one decision impacts something else. And so I'm just sharing a little bit of reflective exercise of what goes on as part of the decision-making process for us at the Houghton School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And our real final, final, final speaker, trustee Ahmed.
Thank you Chair. And my, my comment is trustee Baxter suggested the antisemitism training. I think that's a great idea, and I fully support that. The only other thing that I would like to add is if we only train the staff in antisemitism, how would they differentiate if they see other kind of hate or racism or any kind of other discriminations? So I think we need to have a wholesome approach, and we should train them in everything and make these trainings maybe mandatory and see how it goes. So, yeah.
Thanks for that suggestion trustee Ahmed. I'm actually, thank you everyone for participating in this conversation. It was a good, rich conversation, and I think we've given Director Ennis a lot of ideas and thoughts along the way, and I've certainly learned a few things as well. So thank you very much for that. We will now move on to item 5.3, the communications from the chair, which is usually very brief for me, but tonight I've got a couple of items. And the first is an update on the multi-year plan. And so I'd like to give an update from the Multiyear Plan Steering Committee on the Multiyear Plan for 2024-2028. As you're aware, consultations have been ongoing for the past several weeks and continue throughout the month of June. In addition to community consultations, both in person and online, there have been consultations with CAC, PIC, students, staff, and community organizations. The consultation data will be released to trustees on August the 9th. The facilitators will meet with any trustees who wish to delve more deeply into the data the following week. The facilitators will be working through the remainder of August days to provide an overview of the data themes and divergent themes, review how community data compares to trustees and senior staff's perspectives, set the priorities through team exercises, and define draft goals. From there, they will work with the Multiyear Plan Committee to finalize a draft of the Multiyear Plan to share with the trustees for their feedback. The MYP Committee will then consider the feedback and make any adjustments necessary before bringing the final draft to the board for decision. And if there are any comments or questions on this, I will be happy to pass the gavel to Vice Chair Oliver to chair that portion. All right, and we've got a speaker on the list, trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through the vice chair to the chair, I think. I just had a question about whether there would be some sort of an update in a written form with some dates and a plan. I noticed in an email that trustees were copied on today to a community member that there was mention of when exactly this would be on our agenda, and I wasn't aware of that. So I didn't know what the date was for when MYP is expected to be completed and when we would actually be passing it. And I realized that I haven't seen, you know, a plan of what's going to happen and when and who's involved and all of that kind of thing. I just wonder if that might be coming at some point. Thank you.
I can definitely ask the facilitators to give us something, a timeline. Thank you. Are there any other questions on this topic? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. The second item, I would just like to draw your attention to the latter appended to the agenda and ask if there are any questions or comments. Thank you. We will move on now to 5.4, committee updates. Are there any statutory or staff-led committee updates this evening? Trustee Bryden.
As moved out of the section for decision, the school renaming policy is a governance procedure more pointedly, went to the Governance Committee discussion. We had a couple of folks join us around that table. It's still under, there's significant work being done on it. So per the chair's comment earlier, that is likely to come back to committee of the whole before it goes back to board for decision.
Thank you very much for that. Seeing no other committee reports, we will move on to OPSA update. Trustee Daniele, do you have an OPSA update for public session tonight?
Just a reminder to trustees, if they have not already registered for the OPSA AGM, which this year will be continued as part of the Canadian School Board Association's conference and the national gathering on Indigenous education. It begins, I believe, July 2nd. Registration is open for anyone who has not. As a part of that conference, we will be having the OPSA AGM, and I will tell you that while nominations have closed for the table positions, we will still be looking for a Central West trustee to sit as the Policy Development Work Group. There's only one person who's put their name forward and an alternate for that particular position, and also there may be an opening for an alternate on the education program. That being said, people put their names forward, but that's not been in stone. If you do have an interest in either one of those committees, please let me know. And I would like to thank Chair Collard for her work this past year as a member representing Central West on the Policy Development Work Group. It's been very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I hope that people are going to be able to come out to the AGM this year. It's always really wonderful when we have CSBA in Toronto and are able to have both of these conferences at the same time, lots of rich learning and lots of good networking. So we're now up to 5.6, and I'll ask if there are any school news items or announcements this evening from trustees. Trustee Shuttleworth.
So it's not a school announcement. I pressed the button before you put that caveat in, but I just wanted to make note of the length of this meeting tonight, because I just want it to be somewhere in the record when we're looking at our pilot, that we are looking at reducing our meetings. And again, I love found time, but I know that I'm fading quickly just because of the, and I think we've had so much for this evening. I just want to recognize that, I know even preparing for this meeting, trying to get through all the information to read this all and really digest it in a proper way was difficult because it was a very dense meeting, which is one of the deficits in going to one board meeting a month. That was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Through you Chair Collard. Thank you for, thank you for the comment trustee Shuttleworth. Indeed, the time is getting late and the comment is duly noted. I think just to add context though, and just to remind trustees, this is a month where we are having two board meetings. So part of this is just, is I don't think is really related to the one board meeting a month, because we will have two. And also too, as part of that discussion, I think it's also important to remember that it is the end of the school year. So the increase in volume is to be expected and was something that was acknowledged early on in the discussions about the pilot.
Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through the chair. I think I'm using this section correctly to bring notice of motion. There are two things that have come up. So the first is, as far as I'm aware, the adoption of the IRA definition is somewhat performative by school boards who have done so. I believe that we are obligated because it's been adopted by the province and we exist five provincial statute. So I can bring a motion at the next board meeting to ask if staff could do that research to determine if that's correct, if that needs to be done by motion. Secondly, following on the delegation that we had today, I realized when I asked trustee Collard, or Chair Collard, sorry, that we were not permitted to ask staff questions, so it gave me some time to think on it. And I'm realizing that a few years ago before I became a trustee, but I was certainly an unaware parent and member of the community, there was an issue in this board around anti-black racism, and it was handled, I think, in a very complete way in that there was a new committee created, there was a new policy created or new initiatives. But one element that I've heard was very impactful was a study called, I think, Student Voices, where students who had been impacted by racism had the opportunity to actually talk about that. And I know I've heard at the Human Rights and Equity Advisory Committee that reading those comments and those stories from students was very impactful and really helped to understand what was really going on in our schools. So I'd like to bring a motion to request that that be considered on the issue of antisemitism. And I know that the delegate spoke of having a list of incidences that was not appropriate to reveal here, obviously, but depending what we are provided with, I would like to bring that forward. So just a notice of motion to my colleagues that I'll be communicating about that. Thank you.
Thanks for that trustee Baxter. I have already asked the delegate to provide that information. Trustee Zhang.
Okay. Thank you. Through chair to director. So I have two questions. So the first question is a follow-up question I asked in March. So in March I asked, because the now ministry required us to send the PD activity report. So can we, can the board share the report with all the trustees? So this is the first follow-up question. The second one, because according to PPM 162 and our, the board AP, and for the sex education courses, some parents, they can sign the exemption form. So do we have a database to record how many courses are exempted by the parent's request? So if we don't, I think it's time to create a database to record those things, then, because if we know which grade, which content the parents want to sign their student out of the classroom, then we can do a further research. Because I don't want to say something right, something wrong. I just want to understand if parents have concerns and we can do some research just to see if those content is age-appropriate or not. So that's the purpose. So two questions. So first question is a follow-up about the report. Second is like the database and statistics. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to trustee Zhang, I can tackle the first question. So we do every summer in August, we send an overview to, there's a portal that we have to enter, the summaries for all of our PD days, including whether it's the combination, what panel, all of those things. And then we post on our website 14 days prior to each PD day, that overview. And I could turn it over to communications to elaborate on that process if you would like.
Thanks for the question.
Thanks for the question. Yes, the hgsb.ca website has the PA Day descriptions. And they're like Associate Director Salmini mentioned, posted two weeks ahead of each PA Day. So the most recent one on there right now is, of course, the June 3rd PA Day. And then it's my understanding as well that schools will post a more descriptive informational piece about the exactly what work their staff are working on during those PA Days as well on their school sites.
I checked the school board website, but that description is very brief. So I don't see a lot of content. So even I cannot figure out what is the agenda. So if each school, I'm not sure how much detail we provide the ministry. Is that the reason?
So I can respond to that. So the level of detail that we have provided is what the ministry has asked for. Actually, they called to let us know that they passed our descriptions on to other boards as well as examples. So that is the level of detail that is required by the ministry.
So can we access, can we have a look at those reports? Is this possible? I'm not sure. This is confidential or this is something?
Trustee Shang, I think that's operational. But for your second question, I'll ask trustee, or Director Anastasius Bon.
So I think what Associate Director Salmini said regarding to that second question was that, or the first question, was that the information that we have is posted on the website. Like, we don't have some other documents that, so what we have posted is what is required.
To add to that, though, but in August, I enter into a portal, those same descriptions for the ministry all at once.
But it's a portal, ministry portal. And secondly, to your question around the...
The student exemption?
Student exemption. I don't know that we have a database that has this. I don't know that we have a database of every parent who has requested an exemption. I don't, I'm not aware. We can look into that, but I don't, I'm not aware, but we can look into that.
Yes, I don't need the detailed information about the students. I just want to see what content the parents have concerns. Maybe this is some research we can do in the future. This is not the governance, this is still operational. Because when we received the emails from, from parents get phone calls, so even, I cannot, I cannot make any comments about that. But for the school operation, okay, we need to have a look at what content parents have more concerns about that. So I'm not saying something is right or wrong. And because parents, they have concerns, they didn't have access to the course content. So they just make their assumption, not based on the facts. But we have to look at what the community has concerns. Okay.
Thank you. And now we will need a motion to go into private session. Trustee Amos, would you make that motion?
Yes, I will.
And we are going into private session respecting property matters. This meeting is not open to the public pursuant to the Education Act 2072. Trustee Rocha, would you second this motion?
Yes.
Have there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, this motion is passed by unanimous consent. And we are now in private session. Vice Chair Oliver, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Do people want to take a quick break, five-minute break?
Point of order.
Keep going.
Do we not need a motion to determine how long to extend? Yeah, it's 10.
10 o'clock is our endpoint. So we've added an hour to 11.
No, I thought our endpoint was nine.
No, our endpoint is 10.
Where is that written down? 10 o'clock is written down?
10 o'clock is in our bylaw. So let's just keep going.
All right. Okay, welcome to the Committee of the Whole Private Session for June 5th, 2024. The meeting is called to order at 10:10. Roll call was taken at the beginning.
Welcome back to the board meeting for June the 5th, 2024. We're back in public session and I would like to know if we have any motions from private session that need to be ratified?
Uh, we do have a motion.
Would you please read that motion out?
All right, um, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve matters from the committee of the whole board, private session, respecting property matters, private session, agenda item 3.1 and I so move.
And I need a secondary for that motion, trustee Amos. Is there any debate regarding the motion? All those in favor?
Yes.
That is unanimous, thank you very much. That concludes the business on our agenda for this evening. I declare this meeting adjourned.